Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Dania Beach Regular Meeting on September 25th, what is this? October 28th, 2025 at 7:01 PM. And I call this meeting to order. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Loelen.
Here.
Commissioner Romoli.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan. City Attorney Bootsis.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Mayor DeCorom.
Thank you, City Clerk. If everyone would please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Attorney, if you would please read our Rules of Decorum.
Individuals who wish to make any citizens' comments under that portion of the City Commission Agenda or who otherwise want to address the City Commission must first be registered with the City Clerk. Others who want to address the Commission on any matter must first be recognized by the mayor. All such persons must use the podium in the Commission Chambers. No more than one person at any time may address the Commission from the podium. Comments are only to be made to the City Commission and not to be directed to the audience or to city staff. No individual shall make any slanderous or induly repetitive remarks or engage in any other form of behavior that disrupts or impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting as determined by the mayor. The mayor often allows applause during ceremonial or celebratory portions of the meeting, such as proclamations, presentations, awards, or public safety recognitions, as these are not action items and are intended to honor individuals or events. However, to safeguard an orderly meeting and to preclude intimidation of speakers on agenda items or designated public comments, the mayor ordinarily precludes clapping, applauding, heckling, or verbal outbursts at that time. Based upon the foregoing, no individual may speak directly to or address the mayor, the City Commission, or staff. Comments are to be only directed to the Commission as a whole. No clapping, applauding, heckling, or verbal outbursts in support of or opposition to a speaker or his or her remarks shall be permitted. No signs or placards shall be permitted in the Commission Chamber. If any person's conduct, as determined by the mayor, is found to be disruptive or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, that person may be asked by the mayor to leave the City Commission Chambers. If the person does not leave and the conduct persists, the City Police Department will be requested to escort the individual from the City Commission Chambers. All cellular phones are to be silenced during the meeting. All persons exiting the Commission Chamber shall do so quietly. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Next, we have Item 3.1, Presentations and Special Event Approvals. City Fiscal Year-End Investment Portfolio Update. And that is a finance request for proclamation approval. Do I have consensus from the Commission? Okay. Any opposed? Okay. Item 3.1 is unanimously approved. And then 3.2, we have Request for Proclamation Approval for Friends of the Library Week, which is October 19th through to 25th, 2025. And this item is sponsored by Commissioner Loelen. Commissioner? Oh, goodness, sorry. We approved it. No, okay. Can I have a consensus, just to be sure? Can we have consensus for approval for the Friends of the Library proclamation? We have consensus for that. And we will have, next, we will go... Oh, was that... Oh, Jamie, I'm sorry. I just thought it was a request for a proclamation approval. All right, 3.1. Jamie, if you want to come on up and do your presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Jamie Guzman, Chief Financial Officer. I'm here to bring back John Grady. He's the Manager and Director for Public Trust Advisors. They're the city's financial advisor to many of our investments. And he's going to go over an economic update and an investment update for the city. So I'll turn it over to John.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, John Grady with Public Trust Advisors. A pleasure to be back with you again this year, as we do for our annual Investment Review Update. We'll spend just a few minutes on a few economic indicators to provide a little background on our investment strategy for you. And then we'll spend a few minutes and talk about your investment program, which is doing very well. So first, the gross domestic product, or GDP, of course, measures the growth in our economy. The second quarter reading, the final reading, was 3.8%. It was the highest reading in several quarters. It suggested that the economy is actually doing a little more favorable than maybe what was expected after that first quarter. If you see this chart on the far right-hand side, you'll see a negative 0.6%. We had a contraction in the economy in that first quarter. And we had a rebound in the second quarter. Interestingly, with our economy, we had a big switch from the first quarter to the second quarter. As you know, tariffs became a big topic of conversation in the beginning of 2025. A lot of companies spent quite a bit of money buying plant, equipment, products, and so forth to ensure those before any tariffs came into play. That really was the big factor of why we had that contraction, because that export figure is actually a contraction for GDP. We had a reversal of that here in the second quarter, so that helped with positive, that positive figure. I think importantly, though, what we'll look at and what the market economists are looking for is how well we perform as consumers. As consumers, we make up more than three-quarters of our economy. And we had a slow spending first quarter. Second quarter, that picked up. So the hope is, as we move into the final months of '25 and into '26, we'll continue to see some progress with our economy that's fared well. I'll mention one other comment on GDP and economic growth. You may recall of our last couple of meetings, there was a lot of discussion on a recession. There's always an upcoming recession. It's two, three, or four, or five months out. That hasn't panned, played out, thankfully. We've had a growth in the economy, with the exception of the first quarter. And hopefully, that will continue. And so with that, let me just touch on jobs and inflation, two very important economic indicators that really influence the Federal Reserve and the overnight rate. So jobs has done fairly well. And then in August, we had a jobs number for July that came in lower than expected. But the bigger news, you may recall from a couple of months ago, was we had significant downward revision of jobs. So what this happens with this particular indicator, and many for that matter, they report a figure. And then in the following 30 to 60 days, they revise that as they receive more information for that indicator. And so what happened in August and really for the last couple of months is the labor markets have come in weaker than maybe what was originally expected. So that will certainly weigh in on the Fed. They meet again tomorrow, and they'll release a statement. They'll decide whether they're going to cut that overnight rate or not. But I mention that because the labor market is, of course, the utmost important for our economy. And that has shown to be a little weaker than expected. So we'll see how that plays as we get into the holiday season. The other comment I'll make on the labor markets is unemployment is at 4.3%. And that's favorable. If we look at longer-term averages, that's usually closer to 5%. So while the labor market seem to be somewhat weaker right now, unemployment rate remains very favorable. So again, a positive sign. So maybe a bit contradicting, but overall still favorable from the market's perspective. And if you've seen the equity markets, we only invest fixed income for you, as a reminder. But if you look at the equity markets, they've been really on a run, hitting high levels yesterday, potentially again today. The other indicator I wanted to focus on, and then we'll look at interest rates in your investment program, is Consumer Price Index, or inflation. The Fed's target is right around 2%. We've seen inflation come down significantly, certainly from where we were a few years ago. It got around 2.7%, 2.6%. And we've seen inflation pick back up a little bit. So we can see on this chart, that was August. The most recent reading just came out yesterday, or the day before, pardon me. 3% is the most recent reading. So not moving in the direction the Fed would like. They would like to see that move closer to 2%, but certainly not as high as we saw a few, a few years, a couple of years ago, certainly several months ago. So what we've seen is labor markets potentially weakening, inflation moving slightly higher. And that generally contradicts what the Fed wants to do with overnight rates. So that's where their challenge is. That said, if we look at overnight rates, right now, that overnight rate, if we look at the top, it's close to 4%. In that gray box, it's 4.25%. If we look at all these figures in that left-hand column in the yellow box, what that is suggesting is the number of rate cuts that the market is pricing in for overnight rates. And what does that influence? It influences our bank deposit accounts and really any investment that has daily liquidity. And then generally, rates tie into that. Right now, the market is pricing in several rate cuts. That would potentially bring down the rate for overnight investments. That said, a lot can take place between now, and this is showing through the end of 2026. The forecast right now, though, that 4.25% rate, potentially going just below 4% in the next couple of months. But historically, there's a lot on this chart. I wanted to show you inside these green boxes. The overnight rate was at 0% for nine out of 15 years. So the fact that we've been at 5% plus, or still around 4%, we're still at healthy earnings rates, certainly compared to where we've been in the last several years. The other nice thing when we look at this, and I'm talking about overnight rates, is with the way your investment program is built out, you have a liquidity program that provides funds for near-term expenses and throughout your fiscal year. And then you have two investment portfolios where we invest in fixed-income securities between one and five years. Those securities, and this is a yield curve chart to give you an idea of where those investments have been made over the last 12 months. And really, what we've seen is anywhere from 3.5% to 4% in treasuries. So slightly lower than the overnight rate, but provides a good balance. So as you see overnight rates come down, these longer-term investment portfolios will help protect against that decline. So that's a bit on the economics and interest rates. And if you'll allow me, I'll, let me just pause. Any questions from the Commission, Mayor?
Not thus far. Any on the Commission?
Sure. Commissioner? Okay, okay. With that, let me turn it over to the investment program. And then maybe if you have some questions on the program itself, I'll be happy to address those. Thank you for switching the presentation.
Thank you for that comprehensive update.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I mentioned, as we're pulling up the presentation, the city maintains a very well-diversified investment program. The primary investment objective is safety of these public funds. The next objective is liquidity, again, ensuring that you have these funds available to meet your expenses. And then finally, it's yield, right? Instead of keeping all of your money in an overnight bank account, you have an investment program that's diversified to help protect against volatile interest rates, but also to help provide additional interest earnings than if you had a purely passive investment program. And these two portfolios help do that. The first one is what we refer to as your one-to-three-year investment portfolio. So all of these investments are generally between one year and three years to maturity. And we continually rebalance those, really on a monthly basis, to maintain an average maturity of around 1.8 years for this portfolio. As we can see on the bottom left-hand side, it's a very highly rated portfolio. And just as a reminder to Mayor and Commission, again, all fixed-income securities, no equities or other alternative-type investments, as the focus is on safety. It's primarily invested in U.S. Treasury securities, but we also have a small allocation to high-quality corporate notes, as well as some municipal bond holdings as well. So that's your primary, this particular portfolio has an average yield as of 930 or fiscal year-end of 4.1%. And we compare that, again, to where the yields are currently at 3.5%. So very favorable, protecting against those lower rates. The other portfolio that we manage on your behalf to complement that is what we call your one-to-five-year investment program. And it has, majority of your investments here are between one and five years. So slightly longer average maturity, two and a half years versus 1.8. But the yield on this portfolio is over 4% as well. It's 4.8, 4.08%, pardon me. And again, we can see on the bottom right-hand chart, the allocation of these securities, around 49% invested between one and three years, and around 42% there between that three-to-five-year area. We reinvest these, again, throughout your fiscal year to maintain these average durations for you. And again, to protect from more volatility that might be impacted on a daily or weekly basis within the interest rate markets. And then lastly, just looking at those two portfolios in aggregate, you can see the average maturity overall is just over two years. The yield on these two portfolios on average is around 4.1%. And you can see there on the bottom where you have about a little over 70% in the one-to-three-year area, 20% in that three-to-five-year area, and then smaller allocation, the shorter-term securities that are generally either mature or resell, and then reinvest for you. Highly rated, 89% of your investments are double-A rated. And just as a reminder, U.S. Treasuries and agencies are actually double-A rated. And then smaller allocation to triple-A and single-A rated securities as well. I also want to make sure that I confirm with you all that your investment program overall is compliant with Florida statutes, as well as your investment policy statement that is very comprehensive and is very much up to date. So with that, let me pause on that section of my presentation for any questions from the Commission.
Thank you so much again for that comprehensive information. Any questions from the Commission? Nope? Well, thank you so much. And thank you, Jamie, for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity and the partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Item 4.1, Friends of the Libraries Week. And that is sponsored by Commissioner Loelen.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a request for a proclamation from the Friends of the Library. And it's actually a very worthwhile program that I think we all would agree is a necessary thing that's done in the city, and they do a great job. And they've been very good friends to the city as well. Obviously, the libraries are run by the county, but it's always beneficial. And we have volunteers and people that are very interested in helping be part of the village that makes things work. And our libraries are very important to us. So with that, I have a proclamation here from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, requested by me. Whereas Friends of the Dania Beach Paul DeMayo Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our libraries get, that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission and our Mayor Joyce L. Davis, we hereby do proclaim October 19th through the 25th, 2025, as Friends of the Library Week in the City of Dania Beach. And urge everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better. But I believe, we have people from the Friends of the Library here?
Let's give them a round of applause. Yeah, come on up, Friends of the Library. All Friends of the Library, come on up and be recognized. This is a very important part of our city. And we thank Commissioner Loelen for recognizing you this evening.
Since I'm a lifetime member. Since I'm a lifetime member.
I did want to acknowledge that the Friends work very closely with the city and all of its departments, and we appreciate all the support we get. I would like to commend one person on the commission who has been a life member, Louis Ramoli, from Stage Drive for many years. And we hope to, we hope to encourage all the commission to give us that type of support. Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Moving on, we are going to go out of order a bit today from our normal routine. So up next, we have item 5.1, Madam City Manager.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Team, residents of the great city of Dana Beach that are here, and residents that are watching at home. We are getting started in preparation of our visit to Tallahassee and are in dialogue with Ron Brown from the Ron Book Team. Last year was a very challenging year in regards to the state budget and why that eluded us in regards to funding. I, I do want to put it on the record, since 2019 to 2024, 2025, we have received $9,125,819. And that could not have happened without the advocacy of the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all these Commissioners, who at one time or another have been up in Tallahassee with me. So we're getting ready to represent you again this year in Tallahassee, and Maxine's going to be reaching out to you. We're looking at the week between December the 1st and December the 5th, because this is an early session this year in Tallahassee. If you missed Dana After Dark, the Oktoberfest edition, you really missed a tremendous celebration. And I want to make sure that everybody has in their calendar Dana After Dark, the Light Up Dana Beach edition, that will take place November the 15th, and it's going to be a truly remarkable event for the entire family. This past Fall Fest, this past Friday, was a huge success. And we could definitely see a clear before and after with the Parks and Recreation Team that we have in place and our Special Events Committee. We are very, very, very happy about the great work that they're doing. We hosted our last core conversation meeting for 2025 at CW Thomas Park. It was truly remarkable. We had over 70 residents at CW and had that one-on-one dialogue and be able to have conversations outside of City Hall as we continue to take the government to the people. And, and our $21 million investment at CW Park is really becoming a reality, and that dream is, is fruition. And we're a couple of months away, so we're very excited about that. We also wanted to inform you that if you haven't been to the newly renovated IT Parker, please go. If you need to plan a wedding, if you need to plan a special event, a baby shower, a bridal shower, it's really the place that you, as residents, really have here in your community. It's waterfront, and it's, and it's truly remarkable. And what we're trying to do is showcase any and every opportunity to let everybody in South Florida know what a remarkable property we have here. So I'm very pleased to let you know that this December, Cassie Warren, our Director of Parks and Recreation, will be hosting the Florida Recreation and Parks Association, the board meeting here at IT Parker in December. Very pleased about that. And also, in January, I will be hosting the Greater Florida Alliance. So more and more people are really getting to see what a beautiful facility that's here. But more than anything, we want our residents to know about it, because there's a special rate for our residents. And wait till you see it. You would want to hold all your family events there at IT Parker. It's truly remarkable. As we, as we speak about attracting more visitors to our city and strengthening our partnership with public sector businesses, I just wanted everybody to know that we're working on a partnership with Le Meridian Hotel in Dakota to host our Mayor State of the City address. I know Mayor Davis is, is prepared to give the State of the City address, and it's going to be truly a remarkable event. And as we move closer to already planning next year, we want to be able to livestream, and we will be able to show it to you live, and in the future, be able to actually show it livestream as well. So there's a lot to discuss and a lot of successes to share, so we're very excited about that. Phase two of our Veterans Park is moving along nicely. I don't know if you all got to see the beautiful wall with the American flags, and we're going to honor all our branches of, of the military, including our very own deputy manager, who is a veteran of Marine Corps. So we're very excited about that park, and it'll really complement this area here at City Hall. One thing that's very important to us is how we come together as a team and really bring what our residents want into fruition. And in 2021, when we brought forth our strategic master plan session, we spent hundreds and hundreds of hours between city staff, our elected officials, and we came up, you know, for a vision. We put together a vision for our city, and it was unanimously adopted. And it, it pleases me to, to, to make sure that you all know what the mission of our city is, and I have it right here. And the mission that was unanimously adopted and approved by the commission in 2021, and approved again in 2025, is that we provide excellent municipal services in a financially sound, environmentally sound manner, providing outstanding customer service and partnership with our community. And that is alive and well in our city. And I just wanted to let everybody know, in regards to investment in our environment, we have invested over $52 million. So we are aligning our words with action. When we look at the Southeast Storm Drainage Project, that's an investment of $35 million. When you go to our park and you see our new restrooms that are environmentally sound, based on the direction of Broward County with their subject matter experts, we're looking at an investment of just under $3 million. When you look at the lighting at our beach, you look at the $1.2 million that we invested to make sure that our lighting was turtle-friendly, because, again, we're aligning our words with action, with action, particularly when it comes to our environment. And I know that a lot of you are here today to speak on the environment, but I just wanted to let you know and put it on the record, the work of this commission in regards to investment in the environment and this administration. So we're very, very pleased about that. We also wanted to let you know that we continue to think outside the box and bring the city forward in regards to everything that we're doing. Citywide, you could see what is going on, as you could see, our adopted, unanimously adopted landscaping master plan that started just due, due east of State Road 7. It's coming into fruition. We're going to finish all of that Boulevard on Griffin, and it's moving east, and it's going to be truly remarkable as we move forward to be able to work on US1 on starting. So the city's running on all cylinders. We couldn't do it with the support of the Mayor, the Vice Mayor, and this commission, and truly the remarkable team of public servants that are here to serve you 365 days a year. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. The City Attorney has no report this evening. City Clerk 5.3, City Clerk reminders.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So your next meeting is scheduled for November 18th, which is your one and only meeting for the month of November, starting at 6:00 PM. You have your CRA meeting, and then your City Commission follows at 7:00 PM. And then following that, your only meeting for the month of December is on the 9th, where you'll have your 6:00 PM CRA and your 7:00 PM City Commission meeting. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. And just remain standing, City Deputy City Manager, in light of the City Manager's report and the City Clerk reminders, we will not be in session before Veterans Day. So I would just like all of our veterans who are with us tonight to please stand and be recognized. Veterans, all veterans. Thank you for your service, and we are looking forward to doing a special ceremony in front of City Hall. So we were going to go out of order. We have a lot of people here who are here for two items, and so we want to make sure that everybody who wants to speak has an opportunity to speak. And so we're going to start with item 3.2. Eve, if you would please read item 3.2.
I think you mean 13.2.
13.2, sorry.
So this is a discussion and possible action item, and I'm just going to read the title. It's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, to discuss the city's position relating to Broward County application filed by Port 1850 LLC 2025-285 for Site 97 located at 1850 Northeast 7th Avenue, Dana Beach, Florida, relating to the modification update to the county's environmentally sensitive lands map through the Florida Statute Section 163.3184 process, authorizing a public hearing, even though a public hearing is not required, providing for conflicts and an effective date. This is sponsored by Commissioner Mayor Davis. There's, this is for the city to provide input on a county application for a legislative matter, so I'm not swearing anyone in on this, on this public hearing. Mayor, did you want to go over some of the guidelines as far as you're going to give the applicant's attorney six minutes to speak? I believe you've given to, that opportunity to other people. Mr. Jorgensen and...
Missy Dr. Williams, well, that is. And Brenda Schalafor.
And then, I don't know how many people are here to speak on this item. Could you raise your hand if you're intending to speak on this item? I just want to get a...
13.2, if you're here to speak for 13.2, please raise your hand.
So it looks like about 15 people or so? So you may want to, if, if you're going to be repetitive, you may just want to raise your hand if you just agree with the speaker. No clapping, no applauding, none of that, because we do not allow that during items.
The action items.
But we may want to limit the number of speakers or limit the amount of time thereafter, just because we'll never get out of here.
Yeah. And I have done my own background information on this. So I am going to start off with, with my investigation, because I have heard from so many of you, and so I want to let you know, many of you emailed me, and I wouldn't go into in-depth detail at the time until I had conducted a thorough investigation as far as how this item came to be. And I wanted to make sure that you all knew that I was going to do my due diligence as far as this item is concerned. As the City Manager stated, it is part of our strategic plan and the direction that we want to see the city go in as far as being an environmentally sound city. And so I will give you a little bit of a background of how this came about. Hold on, because I did do my homework. Don't be mad at me, I'm a PhD student, so just bear with me as I go through it. You will get your turn to speak as well, I promise. But on September the 23rd, 2025, I attended a Zoom meeting led by Attorney Ed Stacker, representing a developer seeking to construct warehouses on ESL Site 97, a protected mangrove in wetland area owned by Broward County. The projected, the project appeared under the misleading title NSU Platt and Site Plan. I believe that Commissioner Llewellyn was also present on that Zoom call, and I'm not sure if another Commissioner was on that Zoom call as well. This was the first time both the public and I, as Mayor, became aware of the proposal. Following that meeting, I committed to conducting a comprehensive and transparent investigation involving all relevant local and county agencies, environmental experts, and community stakeholders. Now I'm going to go into the chronology of the investigation of what I found. On February 16th and 27th, the Broward County Environmental Permitting Division conducted field inspections and issued a five-page memorandum, memorandum entitled ESL Amendment Proposed for LAPC, which is Local Area of Particular Concern, which is this mangrove area. They found that based on the information above, the EPD must object to the proposed removal of the LAPC designation and amendment of the ESL map, and that was February 27th, 2024. On February 23rd and August 13th, 2024, the Chief Resilience Officer, Dr. Gerardo, and Deputy Director of the Resilient Environment Department issued an initial memorandum identifying ESL Site 97 as lying within a priority planning area for sea level rise, at risk of flooding and saltwater intrusion. She outlined that any project must prove it will not increase flooding or saltwater intrusion, not adversely affect groundwater quality, environmentally sensitive lands, and must be served by adequate storm water and drainage facilities. Dr. Gerardo's memorandum strongly decuraged any amendment that would allow additional development within flood-prone, sea-level-rise-vulnerable zones. Following the applicant's response from the Chappelle Group, Dr. Gerardo issued a final memorandum on August 13th and stated, "Staff finds that the proposed amendment would further develop, further development in an area substantially challenged by predicted rise in groundwater table with sea level at the expense of high-quality and environmentally sensitive lands. Therefore, the resilience unit recommends denial of the proposed amendment as it does not comply with the Broward County use plan policies." On May 13th, the Broward County Planning Council formally advised, "Due to concerns regarding sea level rise, storm water management, and protection of natural resources, including wetlands and mangroves, the Planning Council staff is unable to support the proposed amendment to remove approximately 3.5 acres over the 21-acre ESL site. Staff's professional recommendation was denial." On May 22nd, 2025, the Broward County Planning Council voted unanimously to recommend approval of the amendment despite the staff's recommendation of denial. This occurred because the managers, the City Manager's letter was misrepresented to the council as the City of Dana Beach's official position of no objection. After speaking with several of the Broward County Planning Council members, it was confirmed to me directly that they were trying to uphold what they believed was the city's stance. Many voted their obligations to Broward League of Cities and Florida League of Cities to respect home role authority. The council's recommendation included a 1.29 acre on-site conservation event and waived a second public hearing. On September 23rd, after I discovered the, when I first learned the plan to remove the ESL protections and construction of the warehouse on the protected mangroves, I met on September 30th with the City Manager, Deputy City Manager Candido Sisso Cruz, City Attorney Eve Bootses, and Community Development Department staff Eleanor Norena and Corinna Joy to review how the letter had been issued. It was clarified that the letter was procedural-only, intended to solely to allow the county's review process to advance and gain subject matter expertise, not to express any policy or position or support from the City Commission. On October 1st, I discussed the amendment directly with Broward County Mayor Beam Furr, who expressed his, and expressed my concerns, and he said he needed to further look into it by speaking with the Executive Director Barbara Blake Boy of the Broward County Planning Council staff. On October 3rd also, I had a one-on-me, one meeting with Dr. Gerardo to further discuss environmental policy and implications. Following that, on October 3rd, I spoke with Broward County Commissioners, who advised me to speak with County Administrator Monica Sapiro, and attended, and also recommended that I attend the October 1st county meeting. On October 7th, I spoke with Barbara Blake... On October 7th, I spoke with Barbara Blake Boy, Executive Director of the Broward County Planning Council, who explained the discrepancies between the 1989 ESL map and the annually updated wetlands map and confirmed that our improvements are underway to align both. On October 9th, Ms. Blake Boy provided a written timeline of the amendment affirming that the Planning Council staff opposed the amendment due to flooding and resource protection concerns. On October 9th, convened a joint meeting with Dr. Gerardo, the city manager, Deputy City Manager, City Attorney, and Community Development Department to review both the county and city perspectives. On October 13th, I met in person with our, and spoke to County Mayor and Administrator Monica Shapiro, accompanied by the city manager, to discuss our concerns regarding the amendment. On October 15th, we followed up, I followed up with the county mayor and the county administrator, thanking them for their engagement. On October 21st, the Broward County Commission deferred the hearing until January 2026 to ensure full transparency and allow additional review and public input on the proposed amendment. On October 24th, I visited Dr. Ms. Williams at the Dania Beach Vervet Project in the Monkey Sanctuary to review her findings and the proximity proposed development to the sanctuary. She reaffirmed the ecological importance of surrounding mangroves and expressed concern about habitat loss. Between October, between September 23rd and October 24th, I also spoke with and received correspondence from dozens of residents and Broward County stakeholders. Every single email, call, comment opposed the proposed amendment. In addition, a petition on change.org, Save Our Mangroves, Stop The Warehouse in Dania Beach, Florida, has garnered at to-date 509 verified signatures, further demonstrating broad public opposition to this project. All subject matter findings and analysis summary, all subject matter experts unanimously recommended denial of the amendment to remove any portion of the ESL Site 97. Their findings established that the site is hydrologically and tidally connected to vital mangrove wetlands in the Dania Cut-off Canal, lies entirely within the planning area for sea level rise, and is prone to flooding, saltwater intrusion, contains mature mangrove ecosystems essential for nursing, roost, nursery, roosting, and refuge habitat, and has held protective designation since 1989, none of which had been removed or weakened provides an essential drainage and resilience benefits for the surrounding community. Collectively, the Resilient Environment Department, Environmental Permitting Division, Urban Planning Division, and Planning Council staff concluded that the removal of any ESL Site 97 lacks justification as inconsistent with the Broward County Land Use Plan policies and would compromise the county's long-term resilience and environmental perfection, protection framework. After a comprehensive investigation involving county and city staff, environmental scientists, community stakeholders, I am in full alignment with every subject matter expert and agency recommendation of denial. In evaluating the highest and best use of this property, the collective expertise concludes that the land's preservation as a protected mangrove in wetland habitat remains most beneficial and responsible use both environmentally and economically. Therefore, it is my recommendation that the City Commission adopt an official position opposing the proposed amendment and transmit this position to Broward County ahead of the January 2026 hearing. In alignment with the City of Dania Beach Strategic Plan, first adopted in 2021 and reaffirmed in 2025, our city remains committed to being an environmentally sound, resilient, forward-thinking community, protecting our coastal ecosystems, safeguarding our mangroves, ensuring responsible land use are central to that vision. Through this process, we affirm our shared duty to uphold the principles of transparency, environmental stewardship, sustainability that define Dania Beach's legacy and bright future. So with that, we will move on to Mr. Ed Stacker, who is from the, Mr. Stacker, would you come up for your presentation, please? Oh, hold on, sorry. I'm sorry, 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 you're not next. We're gonna have our staff who came next, who I've met with, our Community Development Team, Eleanor Corinna, who have their staff recommendation as well. Where are they? They're coming.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Sorry for my interference.
That's okay.
Yes, so we were involved in a lot of the meetings that you were, the same as you and the manager as well. And once we met with the subject matter experts, Community Development Staff does recommend the City Commission to approve the resolution to not support the Lupa.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Eleanor. All right. And next up, we have Mr. Stacker. Come on up, Mr. Stacker. Let's state your name and address for the record, please. And I believe you have a presentation?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a presentation?
You know, I'm gonna waive my presentation in light of yours and just get to discuss some facts and try to keep it and be available for questions later.
Okay.
Edwin J. Stacker with Shudson Bowen, 201 East Los Olas Boulevard, Suite 2200, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. I'm here this evening on behalf of Port 1850 LLC, Shlomo Malul, and Moises Man are the principal managing principals of that ownership interest. Tyler Chappell is also here, he's signed up, and maybe in deference, you might let him go after me. But in any event, I wanted to just go back a little bit and talk about this parcel. It's 5.13 acres. It used to be owned by Nova Southeastern University, and Port 1850 LLC purchased the property in 2019. The property is land used on the Broward County Land Use Plan as Commerce and on the City Land Use Plan as Employment Center, and the zoning on this property is City IG General Industrial. It's not open space, it's not conservation, it's land used and zoned, as I indicated. In October of 2022, having assembled a group of professional consultants to work with them, an application for site plan approval was submitted with the city. And it, the, went through that process, through the DRC, and actually, within the last two months, cleared all of their Tier One comments, and we had the, the community hearing, which you indicated that you were on, and I'm aware of that. And this item, the site plan, having gone through the city for over two years, was ready to be presented for approval or consideration of approval by the commission. It's a 60, just under 63,000 square feet of warehouse, and it was with great surprise that I, and disappointment, I guess, that I saw that tonight's staff is recommending that the property not be able to be developed, for all intents and purposes, in, in their recommendation, and that's inconsistent with the letter that has been of public record since, I think, May of '24, so 16, 18 months, almost. The city's letter speaks for itself. You, you used a bold word there, misrepresented. The letter speaks for itself. The City of Dania Beach has no objection to the applicant's Local Area of Particular Concern map amendment, assuming the applicant obtains all required environmental permits from the appropriate agencies. So this letter was simply a comment that was submitted to the Planning Council staff, and it was with a unanimous recommendation of May, in, May of this year, that the Planning Council recommended that the amendment be forwarded to the County Commission with a recommendation of approval. But that was only after they made us on the record commit to obtain all appropriate and necessary environmental permits, and we committed to record on 1.29 acres a conservation easement and enhance the mangroves on that parcel, and we're doing off-site mitigation. So that was then processed to the County Commission, who unanimously transmitted it, it's called the transmittal hearing, to the state, and the state comments came back in late September. Florida Commerce had no objections, FDOT had no comments, FDEP had no concerns, and Florida Fish and Wildlife had no issues, objections, or recommendations. So at, in deference to the mayor, the city, the County Commission deferred action on this a week ago, as you pointed out, and the matter will then come back at some point at the first couple of months of January, I mean, of 2026. We are just asking you to not change your position from that, which was, has been of record for several months, and the reason is not because you can't change your position, that's not it at all. It's that all, we believe, all environmental issues of concern are being addressed in this process, and we feel that Dr. Gerardo and her staff, this is not an unprecedented situation. I pointed out to a couple of you that in 2019, the city had no opposition to an amendment of a parcel in Dania Beach, and it was over the objection of staff approved. So I apologize for going on longer than I needed, but I would appreciate your concern and understand the plight of the property owner who has property rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stacker. Ms. Norena?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to clarify something. The no objection letter is standard procedure, it's to allow the process to continue. Without that no objection letter to the county, we would have not heard from the subject matter experts to make a decision. This project is still going through the process. It hasn't received approval to make it to commission yet, it's still going through the DRC. Once the county makes their decision, it'll come back to DRC and do another round of review before it comes to you, and then, then we can make a determination and a stance on whether we approve or deny the project. We have not made that stance yet, and the letter that he's referring to is just to allow the process to continue. It wasn't a recommendation from staff or from the city that, that we approve the project. So I just wanted to clarify that to you.
Thank you for that clarification, because that was a clarification that I received as well when, when we had our internal meetings, and so I just want the public to understand that this was a procedural letter. In hindsight, you know, we might look at the verbiage and how things are worded, but this, September 23rd is the first time that the City of, this commission had ever even been presented with this information, so we did not have a position on policy, it was just not for or against, but to allow the procedure to go forward. We wouldn't have information from Dr. Gerardo, we wouldn't have any information from any, from the Broward County Planning Council, the members or anything, if we had not allowed the process to go forward. But in hindsight, the verbiage can be changed and better clarified forward, but I want to make sure that the audience and everybody knows that this is the first time that we have, as a commission, been able to hear anything about this project, so thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
All right. Next, who is this? We have John Jorgensen.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My name is John Jorgensen. I'm a law firm of Scott Harris, 4400 PGA Boulevard, way up in Palm Beach Gardens. So enjoyed the drive down today. First of all, Madam, and I represent Dr. Ms. Williams and the Dania Beach Vervet Monkey, our Vervet project. Dr. Williams is doing fantastic work in the protection and care of Vervet monkeys on her, in her habitat, which is in fairly close proximity in these ESL properties, this ESL property, not far from this proposed warehouse. And first of all, I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, for your due diligence in going through this entire process to explain to everyone that's here what the process is and should be for the, for Dania Beach to make a determination of whether to, you know, recommend, or just to give the county its position on this amendment to the ESL map of the Natural Resources map of Broward County. This is a, and Mr. Stacker mentioned that, that his, his client does have property rights, true, he does have property rights, but the only real action being taken here is, is by Broward County. I mean, Broward County is the one that initiates this amendment to the Natural Resources map to change the designation of this, this proposed change for the ESL designation. And the only thing being done, the only thing, well, a requirement of the county is that it get a, one of the transmittal requirements is for it to get, in this instance, the position of the city on this particular application. It's merely a transmittal requirement, it's, it's required, it's done. It can be done by submitting a letter. I think earlier, the planning, or the Planning Council requirements were Broward County required a much more formal process in which there would actually be a hearing, and there'd be a motion or a resolution or an ordinance passed to represent the city's commission, but I think that was recently changed, so the only thing that's required is a letter. So if there, any property rights that may or may not be affected by the applicant here is going to take place at Broward County when the Broward County Commission makes the final decision on whether to amend the ESL designation on the Natural Resources map. So obviously, Dr. Ms. Williams, who will speak here and can talk more about her project for, in her, for her Vervet monkeys, but we are very much opposed to this proposed amendment. The warehouse, again, is, would be in close proximity to her habitat that she maintains in this mangrove area. Look, warehouse can be built most anywhere, but there's only so many places where you can have a habitat for these monkeys, and there's not that much ESL land left in Broward County, very little bit left in Dania Beach, it's an important resource. With all due respect for the applicant, it's not a place for a warehouse, it's a place to be kept as environmentally sensitive mangrove lands, and again, my client would very much, very much wish the, the commission to agree, or to not agree to any change to the amendment, or any change to the Natural Resources map. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jorgensen. Ms. Schaller?
Good evening, everybody. Madam Mayor, if it's all the same to you, I'd like to speak last.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Williams?
How many minutes? This is she'll get. Three? I think she, she had six. Okay, so. Three minutes.
We'll have three. Your attorney just spoke, so we're just gonna- Your attorney just spoke, so we're just going to give you three minutes. And, and every comment after this, we're just going to do three.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Dr. Missy Williams. I am the founder and director of the Dania Beach Vervet Project and the Monkey Sanctuary, which is in the mangroves near the proposed warehouse site. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I'm doing something that I never do, which is read verbatim from a piece of paper. It is my pet peeve for public speaking. However, I want to make sure that my concerns are abundantly clear tonight. I strongly urge you to deny this amendment to remove approximately the five acres of mangrove habitat from the Broward County's environmentally sensitive land map. The environmental assessment submitted by the Chappelle Group is biased and incomplete, lacking transparency on how wildlife was surveyed, failing to account for cryptic and nocturnal species. We should not rely on a consultant who evaluation, evaluation is aligned with the developer's needs and outcomes. Preliminary data suggests that the mangrove area may provide a foraging habitat for bats and possibly the Florida bonneted bat, a federally endangered species protected under the Endangered Species Act. This is being documented in collaboration with Bat Conservation International. The proposed warehouse would be adjacent to my monkey sanctuary, causing ongoing disturbance from noise, lighting, trash and human activity. Large construction projects are known to generate significant debris and litter, which can easily spread into nearby wetlands, my sanctuary, and while polluting sensitive surrounding habitats and violating the, the intent of the neighboring conservation easement. Our sanctuary is actively contributing to local education and science. We have two graduate students collecting ecological and behavioral data. And we are establishing a field school for local university's students across disciplines. This mangrove area, which has never been formally studied, offers a unique opportunity for local students to contribute to scientific knowledge. Alternatively, something a little bit different. It has been implied that because state agencies issued a no comment or no objection response to the application, that it means that they support the proposed warehouse. I contacted these agencies directly. South Florida Water Management District replied, "Our email is not an approval or objection. The local government that proposed the amendment is the only entity that approves it, FDOT. The department does not have approval authority." Florida Commerce, "We do not approve or deny amendments." These statements are clear. No comments or no objection does not equal approval or support. The accountability and authority rests with this commission tonight and the Broward County Commission. We all know this, but it should be said again. The mangroves provide storm protection, flood mitigation, water filtration, irreplaceable wildlife habitat. The only responsible action tonight is to deny this amendment outright. Thank you for your time and your commitment to safeguarding Dania Beach and its natural resources.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Next, we're not, we're, please, let's keep our decorum rules for Oregon. Thank you so much. I appreciate you guys respecting the rules of decorum. Next we have, is it Genie Carpack, Carpazek? If I butchered your name, please come up and state your name properly for the, uh, record, please.
That's fine. Everybody does. It's Casper Zach, like Casper the ghost.
As I'll remember.
You need my address?
Yes, please.
Um, 6879 Northwest 113th Avenue, Parkland, Florida, 33076. Um, I just want to thank Mayor Davis for doing such a thorough job in explaining the background. I have looked at the sustainable map of, um, land in Broward County, and it, there's like nothing left. And just common sense, it doesn't make any sense to put a warehouse here. Um, and I just kind of, uh, copy whatever everybody else is going to say. Um, your position I support to oppose the change in, um, sensitive land maps. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casper Zach. See, I got it now. Um, next we have, um, Craig Lennar. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please. Can't get through, uh...
Surrounded. Craig Leonard, 345 Northeast Third Avenue. Thank you very much, uh, Mayor, for your commendations and the rest of the Commissioners. I do not approve, uh, this, uh, action. Thank you.
Thank you for showing up. Thank you. Next we, thank you, Mr. Lennar. Next we have Ms. Deborah Williams. Could you please come up and state your name and address for the record, please? Oh, is that you? Oh, okay. Missy Deborah, okay. Thank you for the record. And then Ms. Ray Lear, could you please come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Ray Lear, 5650 Southwest 32nd Terrace in the Estates of Fort Lauderdale. I loved your, I loved your presentation, Joyce. You really did your homework. Thank you very, very much. I'm asking you to please object to removing the parcel of land from the environmentally sensitive land map. I want to talk about the environment. A little piece of environment affects not only our city, but the county, the country, and I believe the world. You know, the mangroves are nurseries for ocean fish. So you start taking away the mangroves, it affects the ocean fish. That affects the world. And I have another objection. I don't like it says, "Though a public hearing is not required." I believe, when, I believe a public hearing should be, be required, especially when it, um, impacts environmentally sensitive lands when you're going to take them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lear, for your comments. And next we have Christopher Calvano. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Christopher Calvano. 1239 Northwest 125th Terrace, Sunrise, Florida. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening. Um, I want to, you know, the, I'm sure the experts that you had consulted with can give you all the details of why this area qualifies as environmentally sensitive lands. But there are a myriad of reasons, um, aside from the fact that mangroves themselves are, are protected. Um, a lot of the wildlife, all of our native wildlife that, that live in them are protected. Um, they also provide, you know, there's no other flood control or erosion control like mangroves. The, these areas are so important. Um, I was born and raised in this county and I've seen a lot of destruction. And, you know, this is one of the last natural areas, you know, especially of mangroves. This is one of the largest areas of continuous mangroves other than Westlake, you know, down in Hollywood. And, you know, it's, it would make no sense to, to destroy it. It just doesn't make sense. It's, it's kind of crazy that it was even, uh, you know, zoned for any kind of industrial use or anything like that. However, here we are. Um, but just, you know, in final word, I am definitely opposed to, uh, any kind of destruction of, of any of this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calvano. Next we have, uh, Mr. Sean DeRosa. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sean DeRosa, 408 Southeast 5th Street, Dania. I concur with all the speakers. Very bright people, very thoughtful people. Um, you know, we look to you guys as our public leaders, not to destroy the environment. I think this is a big vote that can be part of your lifelong legacy that you leave to your kids and your grandkids. I don't think one inch of those mangroves should be touched, you know? Um, again, I concur with Dr. Williams, Dr. Gerardo, and I hope you do the right thing. I think it's a very easy vote. Please do not remove that parcel of mangroves from the environmentally sensitive land map. Should be protected forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. Next we have Philip. Can't read your last name. Starts with an S. Do we have a Philip song? Singleton, okay, Singleton. Philip Singleton, please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Philip Singleton, uh, 12291 78th Place, Northwest Palm Beach, Florida. Please excuse me going in and out. I've been dealing with some food, uh, sicknesses, issues. I'm in, um, outside, kind of getting myself together. Uh, more than anything, I'm here representing Port 1850. Um, that is my client. Essentially, we believe that we've gone through the process, uh, the correct way, even though there's been some discrepancies around the letter and things of that nature. Um, we do feel that a lot of the conversation that's happening here could have happened, not only the Planning Council meeting in May, also at the County Commission meeting in Broward, not from the elected officials on this dais, but also from the people in the community. Because we've done everything in our power to make sure that the public does know about what's, what's happening. And we're not opposed to public commentary at all. We've actually had conversations with members of the Planning Council and the County Commission to say, you know what, we want to preserve the mangroves. Let's put something educational there. Let's put something overall that we can do something to preserve and make a wholehearted effort in that, um, avenue. The biggest thing that hasn't been discussed, even in the social media pieces that I've been able to see, uh, from the Zoom call a few weeks back, is that there's been some kind of misrepresentation of how we actually got here. Uh, when we look at the 1989 land map, essentially what we have is Broward County going to purchase and preserve all the mangroves in that area, um, overall. But they left out this five acre parcel, that NSU, which I understand the confusion there in Nova Southeastern. To my knowledge, they had that property from 1989 until most, most recently, when my client purchased the property. But from that instance, to my knowledge, they were actually studying that land. And if you actually look at the map that some of the social media activists have, uh, put out, you can see in the, um, in the overview that there's a pond that does get developed between 1989 and through the 90s. So we assume that Nova Southeastern has done some, uh, research here. We're not going to go ahead and put them on the, uh, dais here to say, hey, did you do studies or not? But what we are open to is actually coming and looking at the property. One thing that we've kind of seen is that through social media, there are images of mangroves. But I actually went to the property today and I don't believe anybody who's on social media who's actually put out any, uh, content has actually gone to the actual property itself. And that's kind of given a misrepresentation overall. So what we would, um, really like to do is continue the conversation with the city. We're, we're not opposed to clarifying what's happening and getting to a good clarifying issue. I think the biggest thing is getting clarity outside of social media, how we got here. And honestly, um, to, to the, uh, lady, Ms., uh, Barbara or Brenda, I believe, she went to the County Commission last week and she clearly said that she wasn't on it in May. She wasn't on it in June. She finally found out and, you know, it's going to, uh, stir, stir fire, I guess, for this issue. And I'm not opposed to that. Let's have a constructive conversation because we do really have to get to the issue of why did Broward County in 1989 purchase all 20 acres except this five acre parcel? And we're not saying that we're in a situation now, 40 years later, saying, hey, you know, this is perfect time for development. What we are saying is let's have a constructive conversation because when we're looking at this entire LAPC map, let's really ask ourselves, why was this five acres left out of this entire operation? Because if this five acres was absorbed, we wouldn't be here having this conversation today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Uh, next we have Kim Heise. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Kim Heisey and I'm from 6749 Northwest 62nd Terrace in Parkland, 33067. I'm a local wildlife artist and I'm on, here on behalf of several groups, including the same one as, uh, the Monkey Sanctuary, also the Broward Democratic Environmental Caucus. And I'm here to ask that you keep the mangroves as part of the environmentally sensitive lands map, to not let them build the warehouse over these mangroves. I'm sure there are many other places in the city where this can be built. People all over Florida are outraged that building a warehouse over mangroves could even be considered. We are tired of every last bit of green space being paved over. With all the hurricanes we've had lately, destroying mangroves should be the last thing on our mind. Mangroves are some of the best hurricane protection that we have. They stabilize the coastline and buffer communities from wind and water. They're also vitally important to wildlife as nurseries for our fish, including game fish and endangered species. They are also nesting and foraging areas for wading birds and migratory birds. These mangroves are particularly important because it is some of the last in this area of Florida. This plot of mangroves is also directly adjacent to the protected mangroves of Westlake Park. There is no reason why those mangroves should be protected and these should not. There is a reason they are on the environmentally sensitive lands map. Keep it on this map. Please also work to further protect this land so that this type of development never comes up again. Perhaps purchase, purchase it from the private owner or urge the county to do so in the rest of the mangroves in this area and turn it over to Westlake Park like it always should have been. I don't really understand why this is even here. It's exhausting to come to these things. This type of development should never even be before you. This should not even be a thing. I, I don't understand how it got zoned this way. It's very confusing. But I think that, uh, it can be teased out and I hope that you will work to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Heisey. Uh, next we have Sergey Kelly. If you are present, yes, uh, please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Sergey Kelly, uh, based in West Palm, Ida Circle, 10124. Um, here with Florida Keepers, which is a statewide organization pushing to protect Florida through the political process. So we've talked about this habitat. It's mangroves, obviously. There's fish. There could be crocodiles. There's other endangered species possibly there. They can move through there. The fact is though, it's part of Florida's natural beauty. It's part of Florida. And there's concerns that within the own documents of the proponents of the developer, they're trying to argue this has low habitat value or not enough for saving. The problem is, it's Florida. It's wild Florida. We don't need to condemn more of it to concrete. The fact that we have a, a rising wave of officials in Florida who are taking more of a stand to protect the state, it's wild resources and a new wave of candidates who are saying the same thing. This is a new future for Florida, for the younger generation, for those who are going to see their future by higher living costs, crowded streets and loss of the parks their parents and grandparents used to love and cherish. Um, it's also been, in earlier meetings brought up, you know, the balance between development and essentially protecting land. If you just pull up on your phone, just type in Google Earth Satellite Time Lapse. You can look at from 1984 to 2022, which isn't even up to date. We have three years missing. You can just see the green being lost to the gray. And obviously we do need, you know, homes and resource and infrastructure, but you can just see that. You can go in on this area. You can zoom in on Jupiter. You can zoom in on Weston. And the satellite, what we have, the tool there shows us that it is being lost at a precipitous and exponential rate. Um, further, this obviously, this meeting comes on the heels right after Broward County, really surprisingly, but also very well, deferred this all the way until next year. So I think that alone is a clear and strong sign of what to do. Uh, we can't continue to have this pattern in Florida where, yes, there's procedure and yes, there's things that be, need to be done. But it always seems that it's the last minute, at least of citizens hearing about this and saying, how did we not know about this? Why is this being developed? And the argument that it's a little parcel, it's this little thing, it's way over here, is not an effective one when we have every little parcel in Florida at risk of development. Um, and also hearing, I think, social media is a fantastic tool that is bringing light to more of this plight of Florida. It's something that is becoming more strong and more powerful. And I think it's a great way for Florida to move ahead. So I urge you, as well as everyone here in this room, I imagine, to not support this, uh, land being removed from the ESL, to protect it. It is quite obviously on the map, all connected to the last remainder of mangroves that border the Everglades, which is important, but also border the Keys, which is a vital intermediary system for wildlife, for habitats and for our enjoyment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for your comments. Up next we have Mr. Tyler Chappelle.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Tyler Chappelle, the Chappelle Group, 714 East McNabb Road, Pompano Beach. Um, just wanted to keep, be brief and clarify a few things. Um, this property, we have looked at, uh, at the Chappelle Group since 2014 on behalf of Nova Southeastern, as well as, um, previous potential developers, as well as the current applicant. And we've done a thorough review of the site multiple times. We've done, um, the entire site as far as, um, traversing it, including myself. And this is a, a typical application that we, um, have prepared to the... And this is a, a, a typical application that we, um, have prepared to the agencies that were requesting, um, permission to, um, develop the site for industrial warehouse facility. We are taking into account all of the requirements that we need for the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the state in regards to avoidance minimization, reduction elimination of impacts, as well as preserving twenty-five percent of the site for future mangrove restoration, as well as providing off-site mitigation. This is consistent with other properties, uh, including Elevate Dania Beach, which we had similar impacts of mangroves and we had a development on Dania Beach Boulevard. The other, um, aspect I wanted to clarify, there was a discussion about bonded debats. Bonded debats have been reviewed. A bonded debat survey was done in twenty twenty by, um, a third-party consultant. They, they followed all the guidelines and, and as part of their findings, they went along with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Department, which their guidelines state that a dense mangrove forest is not a, a potential habitat for bonded debat. So with that, um, not only do we have that determination with this property, but we also had that determination by the agencies with other properties, including Elevate and Dania Beach Boulevard. So, um, that has been thoroughly reviewed by the agencies and it is not a consideration in their review. The other, um, endangered species that are part of their review, they go through, um, that as part of their consultations. We are in the process of permitting this property, um, and we will be following all of their guidelines, including their construction conditions that would be presented during their permit issuance, if they are inclined to do so. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chappelle. Next, we have Thomas Angelos. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Thomas Angelos, eleven sixty Southwest Second Avenue, Dania Beach, Florida. Um, thank you for your independent study and for leading everyone in the right direction. Uh, we've heard from a lot of very smart people, uh, just now. We've heard from, um, citizens here, we've heard from attorneys, subject matter experts, et cetera. Uh, I think you already know the correct course of action in this case. Um, I want to make a couple of comments on these two gentlemen. Um, just about the Florida bonded debat, a quick Google search, you will see hundreds of articles stating that yes, Florida bonded debats do forage and live in mangroves, so um, that's just a little piece of information for you. Um, and as far as the misrepresentation of the, the, the letter that, um, the attorney here, uh, talked about, I just, I want to point out the credibility of these two gentlemen is not very high. Um, so I just want you guys to take that into consideration. Um, mangroves are important, you know this. There's a hurricane smashing into Jamaica right now, causing all sorts of havoc and flooding. So, as many people have stated, uh, preserving these mangroves is super important to the city, to citizens, um, even the, the neighboring cities next to us. Um, there was something else I wanted to say, and I'm blanking here. A little nervous, I usually don't do this and get up here and talk. Um, you've heard from subject matter experts, they've all stated the same thing. We should not remove this from a protected area. You've, you've heard from the county. These are the people that work for the citizens, not the developer, who, by the way, if you, if you look on Sunbiz and look for this Shlomo, I, I don't, I can't say the rest of her name, I don't, I don't know how to pronounce it.
We're not going to make direct comments about, but just go ahead and, and
I just want to say that, um, there, there's a, they own a very large number of businesses in this area. They do not need anymore. I'm sorry, it's enough already. And sometimes the simplest answer and the simplest course of action is the best, and in some cases, it's just saying, no. Very simply, no. You, you know, and that's all I wanted to say. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments. Uh, next, we have Dan Dawson. If you would please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Dan Dawson, fifteen forty-nine Southwest Twentieth Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, three, 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 one, two. I have, uh, this is some white papers, backup for you guys to utilize to back up what I'm saying to you and all the references where the information came from.
Here you go, over here, sir, he'll, he'll give it to us.
Thanks for everybody who's here tonight. It's very important. We have very little estuaries left and they're critically important. This is one, and I want to bring a different perspective that nobody's really considered. Um, good evening, my name's Dan Dawson. I was born here in Florida, a couple miles from here, in nineteen sixty, and I've spent my entire life connected to this ecosystem. Fishing these waters, watching blue land, crabs migrate, they used to cover everything, and seeing the mangroves once teeming with life. What I'm presenting tonight is not speculation, it's truth, backed by both history and firsthand experience. This land was once a dump, likely containing DDT and other toxic chemicals that still leach into our estuary today. You can smell it in the sulfur, you can see it in the dead water. You can feel it in the silence where life used to be and thrive. Before any construction or development can ever be considered, we must first have full, independent, scientific testing, soil cores, groundwater analysis, gas monitoring, biological sampling, until human safety is proven beyond question. No work should begin. This isn't just about stopping something, it's about saving something. This mangrove estuary is one of the last living nurseries in South Florida. It supports shrimp, blue crabs, bait fish, and other game fish that feed families all along the entire east coast, actually. If we lose these, we lose part of the foundation of Florida's entire marine life. I'm asking that we do what's right. Halt all development, complete the testing, and clean up what's beneath the surface and restore this estuary so it can live again. Not for profit, but for people, for health, and for the generations who will inherit what we decide today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. And, um, our last public comment, uh, will be from Ms. Brenda Schallifer, as she is, this is our last comment from, uh, the public on this item. Please state your name and address for the record, please, Ms. Schallifer.
Did your counsel leave?
Who, Stacker?
No, but the other guy that said he was his counsel.
He's not counsel.
He said he was.
He, he works with him.
Oh, he said he was.
Ms. Schallifer.
All right, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Pardon me, pardon me. Good evening. Wow. What else is there to say? Amazing, the number of people who took time to come to save Mother Nature. You've clearly been given more than enough competent and substantial information to cl- declare that you do have objection to taking the warehouse parcel off the ESL map. The backup material for this agenda item, prepared by exceptionally talented staff at Broward County, provides clear and convincing evidence on which you can rely. The declaration, declarations made by your own staff and the testimony given to you this evening supports this decision as well. We believe you have everything you need to make your decision with confidence. Distracting you may be the elephant in the room, property rights claims. For the record, we all know anyone can sue anybody for anything at any time. The key question is, will it be successful? Any lawsuit that would annul to the city of Dania Beach for making a simple statement that they have objection to taking this parcel off the ESL map, that it has been on for thirty-six years, to put it as nicely as I can, is frivolous. Please do not be bamboozled by the threat of litigation. Again, this parcel of land has been, been on the ESL list for thirty-six years. Today, there are no more rights to develop in the mangroves than there were thirty-six years ago. Due diligence when purchasing this property would clearly, someone would have clearly recognized this. I do not know of a law that rewards those that make bad purchases. I do know of the theory caveat emptor, buyer beware. I do not know of a law that rewards mistakes. I do know about due diligence. Your decision today is in keeping with your strategic master plan. You are simply letting Broward County know that you object to taking this parcel off the ESL map. They, Broward County Commissioners, are the final arbitrators here. You're simply indicating you wish for this parcel to stay on the map. You're simply recognizing that this parcel is an integral part of the river of green habitat for native flora and fauna. This river of green begins on the more than most reaches of Westlake Park, close to the C-ten canal. The natural habitat meanders to the south, through Westlake Park, through the Dania Cut Off Canal, through Westlake Park, to the Ancoold Nature Center. This river of green has been protected for thirty-six years, and we see no reason to end that protection today. Please, take the substantial, competent, clear, and convincing, beyond a shadow of a doubt evidence and do the right thing. Let Broward County know you object to taking this parcel off the local area of particular concern, environmentally sensitive land list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schallifer. That will close our public comments at this time. We will not
Uh, I didn't realize when I said thank you, you said thank you and I thought you dismissed me and I, I looked at it thirty seconds. I'd like to take fifteen or twenty back.
Sir, I'm sorry, public comment is closed at this time. We have several people that are, I still have to speak this evening and we want to get to everyone, so I, 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 I sympathize with you, but public comment is closed at this time. And I will now open it up for, uh, discussion from the commission. Do we have anyone from the commission that wishes to speak on this item? You do. Vice Mayor Salvino.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, listening to all the comments tonight, uh, you know, for and against, you know, I, I look at the basic, and if I'm wrong, I can be corrected, but, uh, looking at the basic way this went down, and I hear people talking about the way they think it should be and the way it was and the way it went. I don't agree with a lot of everybody and I don't, I, I don't say I don't think they're right or wrong, but when I, when I go, if I went to buy something and the property was zoned for something specific such as industrial, uh, building, and I purchased it under that particular thing, I would assume that I could build on it. And if that property was zoned that way, whoever zoned it that way back, and I heard comments like, why did Broward County let it go at that time or let it, them have, why was it even zoned that way to begin with? And I understand that maybe because it is environ- then environmentally, you know, protected areas around it. Yeah, maybe they should have stopped it way back when. Um, my issue with all this is that, uh, that the property has been purchased with good intent, and the good intent was to per, to build on it. Whether or not that person building on it has the same feelings as everybody else does, that's, um, that's why we're divided in so many different ways and what we're, how we feel. The person, but I, I'm having a hard time accepting the fact that even though that maybe it's not the way to go and build on it, and, and I'm, I'm, I can feel that, but I, I'm having a hard time not feeling the same thing that the person that bought the property with good intentions is not getting a fair shake. And it was mentioned in there that, um, that, you know, they, the person should be entitled to build on their property that when they purchase it with, when it was, when it's zoned the right way, that we should not be able to tell them what they can and cannot build if it's zoned for that. So we're, I, I mean, I've been through this back in twenty fourteen when I was elected the mayor. I remember having opposition on certain things, and I was told, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, counsel, legal, our legal counsel, but, uh, by saying that, if we stop the person from building on that property, we're liable for a lawsuit. So I think when I heard other people talking, if it stops at the county level, then the county's going to be liable for a lawsuit because it wouldn't get back to the city. So, as, as representative for the people of Dania Beach, I don't want to see us being sued for a lot of money that the taxpayers have to come out of their pocket for people that are here supporting, uh, not to build on it. And then we have to take it from the other side that we're, why did you let, why didn't you let him build? Because that, he had a right to build and now we're getting sued and our taxes are, money's paying a million dollars, million dollars plus, whatever the lawsuit would come up there. So if I'm wrong, can you explain that to me? Or am I on the right track?
The basic concept of what you're saying is correct. This is a county legislative item.
Okay. So that, so what I'm telling everybody there is whether you like it or whether you don't like it, if, if he has a right to build on it because it was zoned that way, unless the county wants to step up and stop it, I don't, I, I would be very, very opposed to voting ag- against the item because of the way it's zoned, not because it's not right or wrong, and not that I don't think that I'm, I'm, listen, I'm a, a guy of environmental protected feelings too, but I'm not going to also stop the rights of, of, of a person that had good intentions to build something with, following the rules of the law that we support, are supposed to support. So, with that, I think I made my point, and I just, my point is that, uh, I think listening to them and people making accusations that you don't know what you're doing, that's kind of insulting. I didn't like that comment from the public, so, so I feel like I can say that back, that I don't think it's, it was nice to treat anybody that way. But, um, you know, as far as I'm concerned right now, I, I want to be guided by our counsel, and if, if they say that we're going to be sued for something, that it's not something that we caused, I feel like we need to follow that direction. I don't ever hardly ever go against city, um, staff. Um, so if they have a reason that they can tell us how we can get out of it, then I'm listening, but I haven't heard it tonight, so that's what I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And for clarification, it wouldn't be the city that would be sued.
It would be if it comes back to the city from the county.
I'm asking the city attorney.
There, there, it's two steps.
Excuse me.
City attorney.
Sorry, there are two steps. Right now, we're dealing with the legislative item, item before the, uh, Broward County. So, it is their ultimate decision. We're, we are entitled to and we are able to provide input on that decision. There, uh, depending on what the county does, there could be an action against the county, um, if they can't use their land. Um, if it is pr- approved by the county, then it will be a site plan application before this commission, which is a quasi judicial proceeding, that you will have to honor what the county's decision is. And you will, based upon the evidence that is presented then, review the application.
So now at this time, not just by providing a, a position on the statement.
The county code provides for the ability to provide these statements should you so choose.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Uh, city attorney and Commissioner Ramoli.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, so attorney, I, I just, again, just clarify, regardless of what we decide this evening, it's still going to the county.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, thank you, that's all I have right now.
Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, since this is, um, on the agenda, we might as well make some comments about it. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, the applicants and, uh, everybody throughout the community and who's, who's not in the community as well. Thank you, appreciate your comments. What we have here is a very unique piece of property. Um, first of all, when you look at a map of Dania Beach, we're very proud of our mangroves. When you look east of our neighborhood, um, you know, a lot of it's in Hollywood as well. But we do have, uh, probably the largest protected mangrove area in South Florida. Um, it, you know, it's very unique, especially in Broward County, by far. So, we're proud of that and we do want to protect our environment. This piece of property is, it's a buffer between our two largest economic engines in the county. You have the cruise port, you know, Port Everglades to the east, and you have an airport to the west. And they just recently expanded the airport, well, I say recent, but it was for probably twelve, thirteen years ago, when they expanded the airport. And I appreciate the studies that were done on this property, and you see that the county did purchase, uh, what, twenty acres, then this fi- five acre parcel was still available for private purchase. And it's zoned for industrial use within our city, but it's still within the, um, environmentally sensitive area. sensitive area. So I want to just look at the history, right? We have to look back on this. This was designated 36 years ago, in 1989, and it hasn't changed since then, but we also have to see the future uses. First of all, we don't have to make a stance, this is just an opinion that we're giving to the county, but I just want the Commission, I want to discuss with you guys, that we have to know what the future intentions are for this property, right? And the surrounding property for that area, and the ESL designated areas as well. You know, in November 2024, the county proposed to build like 100 tiny homes in a similar lot just down the block from here, okay? And it just, down the block from this lot, which is still on 7th, yeah, it's at the Clayshaw property. So we have to know what the intentions are for the future of this property, and how easily the county can change its designation as well. So I just want to put that out there so everybody understands. You have to understand how people view Dania Beach that aren't in Dania Beach, right? Some people just say, oh, yeah, look at that piece of property, it's in between the airport and cruise ports and industrial property, you know, so what? Of course, we could build there. But when you look at the environmental significance, we have red mangroves in there, we have black mangroves in there, we do have species in there, summer protected. I looked at the Chappelle Report, I appreciate the work that was done, and, you know, after discussing it with experts, it would be, I'd say wise, you know, I don't want to get ahead of myself, like I said, we're just providing an opinion, but it would be wise to get another environmental report, and, you know, it could be done independently, perhaps the city could pay for it, the county could pay for it, that would probably be preferred, but just, just bringing it up, that we would like to make sure that we make the right decision. We're not, we're not getting a site plan in front of us. We don't have a site plan in front of us to see two warehouses being built in a buffer zone. That's not coming to us yet. That's a quasi judicial decision that we have to make once the county approves on this. So we're just providing an opinion is what I want to make very clear. This is not a yes or a no decision if the applicant can move forward or not. This is just giving an opinion to the county, as it was stated before, and this is where we stand. We don't have to give an opinion if we don't want to tonight. It's up to the Commission. But I just wanted to lay that out there of what the, you know, the past, what it is, what it was, what it is now, and what it's going to be in the future. So we just have to be very careful when we consider the potential uses and the future, being that it's located in between our cruise port and our airport, and there's multiple entities that own property around there, the county, City of Hollywood, and, you know, City of Dania Beach as well, and private properties as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Luellen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions or comments. One, that proposal for the tiny homes on the Clayshaw property, that failed, correct?
Yeah, just barely.
Yes, just barely, but it did fail. For, through the mayor to the city attorney. This item will go to the county, as Commissioner Ramoli said, regardless of what the comment is tonight, what the decision is tonight. It may or may not come back to us, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, depending upon what happens with the county?
Yes.
Okay. And regardless of that, how many more public hearings are there anticipated to be on this? Do you know?
On the, it's going for second reading before the county commission, so I think procedurally what they do, they have a meeting in January with a schedule, and then it's at a later date each notice, so it may be February, March, I really don't know the date.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that people understand, because there was a comment about no public hearing, this is because the item tonight is not something that we have to do right now, I think, as somebody, one of my colleagues said before. So that's the only reason why, we don't have to do a public hearing, we're doing a public hearing, but there will be other public hearings on this item with the county potentially here, depending upon what happens. That's all, I just wanted to clarify that for the public. Thank you.
Okay, so I have no further comment from the Commission. If we don't have an official position, then do we have a motion for?
We do have a resolution, I don't know if you want to, anybody would like to make a motion on that resolution?
All right, we have item 13.2. Do I have a motion for, on item 13.2? Commissioner Ramoli?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a motion to oppose, moving forward with it.
Okay, I have a motion to oppose item 13.2. Do I have a second? Hold on.
Could I just have clarity for a moment? Because the resolution is written in the negative, so it's a resolution not supporting the application. So, so are-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, one at a time, hold on, I'm going back to Commissioner Ramoli and-
Yeah, it's a resolution to support the resolution. Yes, sorry, thank you.
To approve the resolution.
To approve the resolution, okay. We're clear. And then, thank you, Commissioner Ramoli. Commissioner Luellen?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Commissioner Luellen. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Nay from Vice Mayor Salvino. Resolution passes 4 to 1. Item 13.2. Thank you, Commission, we will move on. Please keep the rules of decorum as you leave the chambers. Thank you all for coming, thank you for voicing your opinions, we greatly appreciate your engagement with the City of Dania Beach. We will now again move forward with, yeah, we'll take a moment to, to, well, yeah, thank you, City Manager. Before we go to the next big one, I think there's two people here, there's the, I just want to get you guys ready as people are leaving. We have all this beautiful red in our audience, we don't want you to stay through another hour or so, so we'll get ready to see the South Broward Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Why don't you guys come on up, or whoever was this, let's give, yes, we can-
Mayor? Mayor, are you taking citizen comments at this time?
This is still citizens' comments, I'm sorry. Just for the record, this is citizens' comments, so this is not action item, that's why we're cheering. We're going out of order tonight because we have a lot of people in the House, and we want to try to get as many people in and out as possible, so, yes, thank you so much for coming and visiting our chambers this evening. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Absolutely. Good evening, my name is Vicki Fraser-Williams. I am Anne alongside my Chair of Social Action.
Good afternoon, or good evening, J. Anna Seaborn.
We are with the South Broward Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. It is an organization of over 300,000 college educated women across the globe, not just here, but of course in Japan, and in Germany, and in Africa, and we could keep going. A thousand chapters across the world. But we, our chapter, is right here in South Florida, in South Broward, and Dania Beach happens to be in our service area. So we wanted to come and introduce ourselves to you, let you know that we are in this community. We love Dania Beach, we spend a lot of time at Dania Point, don't we? A lot of time at Dania Point. I would like the rest of my sorority sisters, if they will stand where they are. As you can tell by how we're dressed, we are definitely crimson and cream. Most of us have pledged at HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities across the United States. I will just say this to you, in 1913, our founders started this organization on the campus of Howard University, and we were a part of the first, the Women's Suffrage Movement. Our sorority, we're the only black women who are part of that march. So social action is a part of our DNA. So we want you to know that you will be seeing us. We picked a night, it seems, where y'all have a lot of business to take care of, but we do want to tell you that we appreciate allowing us to introduce ourselves and let you know we are here to serve the community. And that is it.
Well, thank you for coming, we appreciate that. And I had the privilege of welcoming your sorority. You guys had a huge event at the Dania Beach Casino, I believe it was, last year, and was it a specific anniversary you were celebrating, or just coming to Dania Beach because you love us so much?
We have, and one of the big things we do is give scholarships, that's a huge thing. What you attended was what we call the Red Shoe. It is our annual really big fundraiser, and we did, I believe, that at Dakota's. So expect that we're going to be around, I'm glad you were there, glad you enjoyed it, expect more of the same.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate you coming, and we always are about service, and we know that you are as well, so we look forward to seeing you more in our community and seeing how we can help one another. Thank you for staying this long, we appreciate it.
Thank you all. Good night.
Yeah, I need to smile.
Yes, she does, good energy.
All right, we have Rick Buckner, is Rick Buckner still here? Rick Buckner? Okay, well, he's not here. All right. So now we're going to- Yeah, I need to, what time is it? Let me get through this one, let me get through this one, let's get through this one, yeah. All right, let's go through, and we're going to move up item 12.1 next. Eve, if you could read item 12.1, please.
Mayor, if you don't mind, can I read 12.1 and 10.1, that would do one presentation on the two items that are interrelated?
Yes, just make the distinction between the two, and you can read them together, I appreciate it.
Okay, so 12.1 is the second reading of the ordinance to vacate the property, and I'm going to read the title. Just, the second item that I'll be reading is if that passes, then we would be voting on 10.1, which is the waiver of plat application. So 12.1, an ordinance of the City Commission pursuant to the requirements of Section 655-40 of the LDC approving the right-of-way vacation request submitted by the applicant's adjacent property owners Tammy and Ellis James for the property located between Northwest Second Place and Northwest 12th Avenue respectively, which consists of approximately 100 by 70 feet of Northwest 12th Avenue, lying east of the applicant's property located at 255 Northwest 12th Avenue, which right-of-way is generally described as Northwest 12th Avenue, and is located within the City of Dania Beach, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. This is a community development item. 10.1 is the quasi judicial hearing and public hearing on the resolution of the City Commission pursuant to the requirements of Section 655-40 of the Land Development Code approving the waiver of replat requests submitted by the property owner Tammy, property owners Tammy and Ellis James for the property generally located at 255 Northwest 12th Avenue in the City of Dania Beach, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. This is also a community development item.
Good evening, Corinne LaJoy, Deputy Director of Community Development. For the latter item, this is second reading of the rezon, I'm sorry, second reading of the vacation request for right-of-way. We made a presentation at first reading, I'm happy to go through it again, but I know the applicant has a presentation they'd like to present this evening.
Thank you, Corinne. Anne is the applicant here. The applicant like to present a PowerPoint presentation at this time?
What are the times on there?
We're going to give the property owner six minutes, and the attorneys for St. Ruth six minutes for presentation, and then everybody else will get three minutes for public comment following that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. My name is Tammy James, I live at 255 Northwest Tamara James Avenue, and tonight I will have my daughter present, do my presentation for me.
Thank you, Ms. James.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, Tamara James, on behalf of my parents, the applicant, at 255 Northwest 12th Avenue. I'm going to try and read fast, since I have five minutes and 30 seconds left. I'm here to basically state facts. There was a lot of misinformation that was presented last meeting, and I want to just be very clear. All right, let's start with the timeline. I just want everyone to show their hands, who is in support of this, because everyone's not going to be speaking. If you're in support of this, can you please raise your hand? Thank you. And we also have a petition that we have received of the, over 70 signatures from residents that actually live in the area, in the community. So as you can see with this timeline, the timeline really starts in May, May 1st. It was a notarized letter from former Mayor Bobby H. Grace that gave her authorization of conveyance of that additional 35 feet of land. On the 2nd, you can read through it, from June 2nd, the application was submitted to the city. On the 20th, all of the required fees and access of over $6,000 were paid to the city for various things. Notice letters were sent out on the 26th to everyone that's within that 1,000 feet radius of the property, including St. Ruth Missionary Baptist Church, which abuts the property. I want to say that two signs were posted on the 30th. We have members of St. Ruth's congregation taking photos of those, so from June 30th, they knew what was happening, they understood what was happening with this property. We're going to move down to July 10th. That's when the city informed us that there would need to be additional letters, and they provided the addresses of those additional letters. And on that same day, we called to Pastor Emmanuel and his church, and asked them to meet at the property, which they did, and I was present for that meeting. We addressed our safety concerns, it was a very friendly and cordial meeting, so it's not a us versus them type of thing. They told us that they were, they didn't see a problem with getting us a letter, they just needed to meet with their trustees. We did not get the letter, but instead, a day later, the church contacted the city and asked for another extension for a week to produce that letter. On the 16th, this was heard by the Planning and Zoning Committee, and it was approved with a 4-1 vote, and both St. Ruth and their members and leadership were there present. Move down to, what is that, September, on the 23rd, the applicant met with the mayor and the Community Development Director at the site location. The 24th, a day later, it was another request from the church to meet again on the same day at 6 o'clock, which the applicants met at the church. On the 25th, which was the first reading, it passed with a 3-2 vote. Second reading was pushed back another 30 days at the request of the church, because they informed the city, they were told about this last minute. This timeline proves otherwise. As a matter of fact, on that first reading, I want to remind you, many of the congregation that came here didn't even know what they were coming here for. They received notice, notice to just come and hear what the city was up to, did not understand since June that the church knew about this, had not been contacted about a development, had not given contact about any concerns of anything. So if you do the math, it's 110 days that we have had to wait. 110 days that we have had to say, guess what, we heard that this is rushed, this is rushed, this is rushed. I heard that so many times at the last meeting, this is not rushed, 110 days is not rushed. You have more than enough time to tell your congregation about this, you have more than enough time to obtain an attorney. Very quickly, we'll just talk a little bit about this big, beautiful ficus tree that is protected under the City of Dania Beach's code. I've been hearing a lot of things about code and code and respecting the code, it's protected, it poses no hazard, and it is healthy, and the city does not recommend approval just based upon, you know, any type of convenience. It has to be a development agreement, and I am going to talk really briefly in the next slide to show you why this is not feasible. Road access. I know you guys can't see this, too small blurs, but that's actually the city's code that I pulled offline. The road access, the City's Land Development Code state that a new road must have a minimum width of 50 feet, and no other building or structure can be erected closer than 25 feet to the center of such streets. This is listed two times in your code, just wanted to put that there. And I also want to bring to your attention the fact that Saratoga, all three buildings have one point of access, and this property has two points of access- have one point of access and this property has two points of access on Northwest 9th Street. This is from the city's presentation reminding you that this supports the city's comprehensive plan, which is the right of a property owner to physically possess and control their interest in the property, including easements, leases, and mineral rights. Also, from the city's analysis, that private ownership and control of the property will help and limit criminal activity in this area. I have one. I didn't know I was going to only get six minutes. I have one final statement from the applicant. Am I allowed to read this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On behalf of the applicant, this is their final statement. The narrative that future development would be impossible without this right-of-way is simply inaccurate. First, there is already a legal, fully functional access point via Northwest 9th Avenue. Any developer has a clear complaint and established route for ingress and egress, suggesting otherwise misleads the public and misrepresents how development works. Second, this strip can never be approved as a roadway under our current land development code as is. One land, as you saw, measured 12 and a half feet wide. The code requires a minimum of 50 to 60 feet on this street. Third, no reputable developer or lender underwrites a project based on hypothetical access to a property they do not own and the city cannot legally approve. Northwest 9th Avenue already satisfies access requirement. And most importantly, city staff has thoroughly reviewed this and found no negative impact on development. Their own recommendation confirms that this vacation maintains utility access, enhances safety, and does not hinder future development. The bottom line is this, development is not and has never been reliant on this little sliver of land. We are doing what is improving safety, eliminating nuisance, and respecting property rights. Thank you. If you have any questions, I am here.
Thank you, Ms. James.
Questions?
I don't see any questions at this time, so we will move on to Mr. Tucker Gibbs. Please come up and state your name and position and address for the record, please. Yes, he gets six minutes as well.
I won't be up for six minutes, I promise.
Okay.
My name is Tucker Gibbs. Law office is at 3835 Uretopia Court in Coconut Grove, Florida. And I represent the St. Ruth Missionary Baptist Church, which owns property that abuts the right-of-way, that is the subject of the application for abandonment of a platted right-of-way and a plat waiver. My client objects to the application because it fails to meet the Dania Beach Code Section 655D, which requires that the right-of-way be abandoned by a new plat approved by the city commission. This is contrary to the Article 8 of the Broward County Charter, which gives to the city the authority to create a mandatory plat ordinance and establish the Broward County Planning Council. That county charter provision, which is Article 8, says, "The county commission shall enact an ordinance establishing standards, procedures, and minimum requirements to regulate and control the plating of lands located in the county." In addition, this is the same thing. It says this in Article 8 of the charter. "In addition, the governing body of each municipality may enact an ordinance establishing additional standards to what the county has already created. Additional standards, procedures, and requirements, as may be necessary, to regulate and control the plating of lands within its boundary." It's two processes. You have a plat that is approved, and I think you all have kind of talked about that a little bit today, but it's one issue for you all to look at a plat, a proposed plat, and you have an ordinance which is very clearly stated what you do. The county and the planning council specifically do not tell you what to do. They review the plat that you've approved based on the county code. And that's really important to what I'd like to say. Therefore, any approval of an abandonment of a platted right-of-way in the city of Dania Beach must follow these additional standards and requirements necessary to regulate and control the plating of lands within your boundary. There's a process in Section 655 that allows the commission to waive the requirement for a new plat, which we are going to be talking about, if that plat would cause an undue hardship to the property owner requesting the abandonment. Undue hardship has been defined by Florida courts as a physical attribute of the land that makes it impossible to use the applicant's property consistent with the zoning code without the requested action. There's no evidence in the record presenting here so far and what I've read in the file that this applicant cannot use her property consistent with the zoning code without this abandonment. That is a very important issue. That's what's going on here. People are saying, no, 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 you can't. You don't have to follow these regulations. You don't have to issue the plat. The code is specific. It is the law of your community. And it says, if you're going to do this, you have to have a plat. And if you want to establish, if you want to say you can do a waiver, if you want to have a waiver, the applicant has to show what their undue hardship is. And I don't see it defined in your code. Maybe it is. But I can tell you in the law what it's defined as, and they don't meet that requirement. My client respectfully, therefore, my client respectfully requests that you deny both the vacation and plat waiver applications because they failed to meet the requirements of 655 as authorized by the Broward County Charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
Oh, I didn't. I did. I almost go over. I apologize.
You did well. I'm not giving an opinion, but you did. It was on the time, on the time. I'm just trying to make sure I'm staying in bar zone.
Well, your city attorney will probably tell you that's a rarity for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
Did you have a question for him?
Vice... No, not for you. I just have a question for you.
For me?
Yeah, I just was going to say, in this conversation, can we have the city...
Hold on, hold on a second. Well, not you. I think Vice Mayor has a comment that he would like to make and then we'll move on. I'm getting ready. Hold on, Vice Mayor. I'm getting ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Bringing that to light, I mean, like in the last conversation I had, I would like to understand those rules. So can that be explained, Corinne or Elador, please?
So you're questioning the plating requirement? So the code does say that vacation of right-of-way requires plating, replating of the property. But then it also has a provision that allows the city commission to waive that requirement.
Okay.
And the applicant has applied, asked for that waiver as well.
Okay, thank you, Corinne. Counsel, how do you say about something like that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Well, the question is that, you know, she's saying that we could waive it through city commission.
Corinne is our planning director, so she clearly knows our code.
Okay. I just want to make sure what we're doing and what we're saying. You have...
And that is part of what this 12.1 is. Let's just, I want everybody to be clear because when you get, you know, everybody has their special wheelhouse and so you have city attorneys, attorneys, and that jargon can be confusing. So just broken down in layman's terms, if you would please, city attorney.
Sure. So the first item is 12.1, which is to allow for the second reading of the ordinance to vacate the right-of-way. Once the property is vacated, it goes to the Tammy James property. So the adjacent property, was it 255?
Northwest 12th Avenue.
Thank you, Northwest 12th. And in Broward County, overall, things need to be platted. Platted means you designate on the official maps that are recorded in Broward County that this is all part of one parcel. It's now no longer a roadway. It is now part of the parcel. So the second item, which is 10.1, is the waiver of plat. Doing a plating process is a very expensive process. They basically, it's not just this one parcel. It's more than one street. So to reflect it, you can do a waiver of plat. Waiver of plat just basically means it's insignificant enough that you don't have to go through that formal process. And that is the application that was filed.
Okay. Thank you.
What, I'm sorry. And to answer the question about Mr. Gibbs, what he's arguing that he does not believe that we follow the proper plating process, therefore, both applications should be denied.
But you're saying that, Corinne and you both have said that we can do that through the city commission making that decision?
That they can, you can go forward, yes.
Yes, okay. Just want to make sure that I'm getting the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, city attorney. And now we will move on to Daphne Henry. Hold on just a second. I'm going to let her speak and I'll come back because I already called her. Come on, Daphne. Ms. Henry.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address.
Daphne Henry, 1001 Northwest 2nd Street, Dania Beach. I live on the corner of 12th Avenue also. I'm one of the ones that have been living here for many years, grew up here, and also raised my kids here. And the reason being for that, if we worry about the security, you know, the crime, and we looking to try to show our residents safety, you know, that we can sit or, you know, in our homes and not worry about crime coming about. So we just want to just safeguard that area for everybody that's in that area. So I don't see anything wrong with the James taking control of that vacate, that right-of-way. So I'm all for it.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. Shanika James, would you please come and state your name for the record if I pronounced that correctly?
Hello. Shanika James, 150 South Bryant Road, Dania. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Attorney, City Manager. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents and I first want to thank you for your time on this matter. This should never be the church versus the James family. Both of my late grandmothers, Jewel James and Ed Funches, were members of that church, as was my late Aunt Doris. My parents were married in that church and we were members there as well. So this situation is seeming very personal and it should not be so divisive. The request was in process. We went over the timeline and we're discussing has been vacant, the land we're discussing now has been vacant for over 40 years. It's far too small for any roadway and the fire department has stated they will not use that entrance to enter the property. The church already has two access points. So the question remains, what exactly is the real opposition here? My parents' community has one way in, one way out. Saratoga has one way in, one way out. Sun Gardens has one way in, one way out. Safety is also a real concern. We've had homeless individuals on that vacant property. I personally met two homeless people face to face coming outside of my mom's property 5:30 in the morning. Yes, we can call the police, but in that moment, the police are not there and the police can't sit 24/7 in front of the house. Keeping this a dead end will help deter crime and create a safer environment for everyone. This is clearly, like I stated, become personal and personal feelings should never outweigh city policy, property rights, or facts. My parents have followed every rule, paid every fee, and earned every approval. So tonight, I respectfully ask that you stand by your decision and finalize this vacation of right-of-way so that everyone can move forward respectfully, fairly, and in peace. At the end of the day, we are all part of the same community and I truly believe that when we act in truth and fairness, God honors that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James, for your comments. And now we have Pastor Michael Anderson. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Commissioner. I'm Pastor Michael Anderson. What else do you ask me to do? I'm tired. I've been up since 4:30.
We're going to say both together. Name and address for the record, please.
2254 Douglas Street, Hollywood, Florida. Madam Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Attorney. I echo Shanika James. I love these folks in the room. That's it.
Thank you, Pastor Anderson. All right. Pastor Ricky Young. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I am Ricky Young. I reside with my queen at 225 Northwest 7th Avenue, in which we are homeowners. There's a thing that we used to do back in the day. If we had a problem with someone, we'd go to that person. They don't reason together. We go and get two people, not of our own ideals, not your buddies, to go as truth be spoken. And if they don't hear those people, then you're supposed to bring it to a higher authority, not the courts. May God bless and let's speak truth to power.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And next we will have Michelle Wilcox. Please come and state your name and address for the record, please.
We actually have a presentation with the three of us, it's me, Angeline, and Sirim.
Okay.
So...
Do you all have separate things for...
We're doing each page separately.
Okay. All together, but separately, so I can remove those. Yes, they're all together. Yeah, they have three minutes apiece, so they're doing it together. Okay.
Good evening, Madam President, Commissioner. I am Angeline Flowers, 6193 Osprey Terrace, Coconut Creek, Florida. Who are we? St. Ruth Missionary Baptist Church, affectionately known as St. Ruth, is one of the oldest churches in Broward County with a history dating back to 1908. St. Ruth has a legacy to this community at large where we were the first public school, housing the first public school, colored students in Dania, hosting graduation ceremonies. We all know the Peterman School, which provided affordable childcare for many working-class residents of Dania Beach. For the past 20 years, operating a food bank, providing hot meals to the community during COVID, at least two times a week, food services to the community, facilitating holiday giveaways to youth, bicycles, clothing, food, partnering with Collins Elementary through financial donations, and providing volunteers to the school. Uniform purchases for the football team, Odella, C.W. Thomas Park. And during the current federal government shutdown, we are addressing the insecurity through targeted food programs. We have been focused on helping working-class families for generations. While we're here today, St. Ruth opposes the proposed vacation of right-of-way for reasons expressed on record during the September 25th, 2025 meeting and other... expressed on record during the September 25, 2025 meeting, and other concerns detailed herein. St. Ruth's opposition to the vacation of right-of-way is based on a lack of focus on policing and public safety. The city should actively address the root causes of safety issues. The present affordable housing crisis, a new law, Senate Bill 1730, has been passed, which will be impactful. Concerns about proper application of public easement laws, unnecessary limitations to future development, broader concerns about impact to the city, the four-value developed parcels, including a potential negative impact to tax rolls. The church's opposition to vacation of right-of-way is not a deliberate infringement upon any resident's right to live in safe and a secure environment, a lack of concern about a broader public safety issues, a special request asking for in-kind consideration. St. Ruth values all residents and would like to work in partnership with the city to find a workable solution that benefits all constituents and stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. Ms. Wilcox?
Good evening. My name is Michelle Wilcox, 5201 Southwest 18th Street, Plantation, Florida. Policing and Policy, Public Safety. Law enforcement is critical to the success of a community, and the City of Dania has demonstrated this through appropriation. The City of Dania Fiscal Year 2026 Proposed Budget calls for approximately $23.5 million in policing spending, a 6.8% year-over-year increase. A total of 100 FTE, 92 sworn are dedicated to policing, including Patrol Deputy 63, a Crime Suppression Team 6, and a Neighborhood Support Team 3. Dania Beach has the following additional resources: two Mobile Eye-in-the-Sky Towers, access to BSO Real-Time Crime Center, drones, access to state-of-the-art technology to track and reduce criminal behavior. We would like the city to explain how any of these resources have been used to proactively address the public safety issue experienced by the applicant. The city has the resources, but action is required to address the issues expressed in the application. As stakeholders in the community, we would not want the city to turn its back on public safety by granting the vacation or right-of-way, which then puts the onus of public safety on property owners. The application does not address the root cause, and would only shift crime from one location to another. Affordable Housing Crisis. We have an affordable housing crisis in South Florida, and City is taking action, which may conflict with a new Senate Bill 1730, the Live Local Act. Senate Bill 1730 authorized the governing board of municipality to approve the development of housing that is affordable, including mixed-use residential on any parcel owned by a religious institution. Additionally, this law states, notwithstanding any other law or local ordinance or regulation to contrary, a county may allow an adjacent parcel of land be included within a proposed multifamily development under certain provision. St. Ruth has stated it intended to develop this land for affordable housing. St. Ruth may, in fact, need the public easement to facilitate a successful project. Action taken may now may reach, oh, public, St. Ruth may, in fact, need the public easement to facilitate a successful project, and may need an access to public land pursuant to the new State Bill 1730. Action taken now may restrict St. Ruth's ability to fully apply this new law, and may run counter to the spirit and the intent of the letter of this legislation. St. Ruth is currently evaluating this law, which became effective July 1, 2025, and plans to leverage all provisions in it.
Thank you, Ms. Wilcox.
My name is Cedric Reynolds. My address is 2624 Northeast 22nd Avenue in Lighthouse Point. And I'm a member of St. Ruth, but also, I just want to say that I grew up on 12th Avenue. My family owns land there. We own real estate, real property, and I fully appreciate the concerns of the applicant. But I also want to, you know, in addition to my church family that spoke before me, talk about other issues, public easement. Public easement is designed for the public good. It's designed for infrastructure. It's designed for access to transportation. It's designed to help everybody. And this approval of this vacation does the following: permanently removes access to adjacent, an adjacent public sidewalk, permanently removes access to a roadway which will be utilized in the future development, permanently restricts future extension of Northwest 12th Avenue northward, permanently restricts future development of parcels and land north of the dead end for future owners. It's unclear if the existing property at 355 Northwest 9th Avenue, owned by St. Ruth, would have adequate ingress and ingress to support density options pursuant to SB 1730. Arbitrarily, and also, this, this vacation of right-of-way arbitrarily impacts transportation infrastructure when other tools, as we detailed earlier, are available at the city's disposal to address any necessary improvements to public safety. Let's talk about, and like I said, I grew up here. I remember when what is now Dania Point used to be Grand Prix Raceorama, used to be the Dania Rock Pit, used to be a dirt bike pit, people used to ride dirt bikes out there. But look at it now. And it's that way because of what you have done collectively, what this commission has done. You have facilitated development in a way that has benefited the entire community. What does that mean? Dania Point, a New York firm came here and received tons of inducements, tons of support, visionary support from you, and it became a successful project. That's what St. Ruth is asking for, equal treatment, as you would give an outsider. We're locals, we're a stalwart of this community, and we're trying to develop this property in a way that benefits the community. So, if you look at actions taken today, will not increase the value of this property. There's no, there's no animus here. There's no vitriol. We're not trying to be cantankerous about this. The trustees of this church are trying to adhere to their responsibilities under FS 617 Spot 0830, which requires them to act with duty and care for church assets. Can I just have 30 more seconds? I apologize.
You can have 30 seconds.
And why now? At this last meeting, you asked the question, why now? So, here's why. We've been addressing several challenges that have negatively impacted our church. Number one, insurance spikes. We were hammered with insurance, hammered, and it took a ton of resources from the church to address that. But we fixed it. We have a visionary trustee board, and they were able to proactively take actions to reduce our costs by 60%. Church financing, COVID impacted churches all over the nation. Attendance was down, contributions were down. We're recovering from that, and we're moving forward, and we now have a reserve fund where we're able to support some of these exploratory costs. Church capabilities.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Okay.
I'm just, we need to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. Mr. Jones is next. Okay, Mr. Jones is the last person to speak, so you can go ahead and wrap up your final moments with his time, and then Mr. Jones will not speak.
Our church capabilities, we have been actively trying to upgrade our capabilities as an institution. We've begun discussions with new space developers, and we will be establishing a special community that manages project going forward. Our direction, you know, we've had successive departures of prior leaders over the last several years, but now, we have been blessed with a dynamic young man, and I can call him young because we both went to Nova High School, but he came after me, who's from this community, he's a local business owner, and he is committed, committed to making Dania a better place. And legislative shifts, we already talked, you know, with a little bit of, you know, sort of overarching on SB 1730, but I would, I think it behooves the commission to fully understand the impacts and the obligations that you now have based on this new law. This new law is designed specifically, specifically to encourage and allow for ease of construction for affordable housing, and that's what we're talking about. And anything that you do, I'm not a lawyer, that you do that contravenes this law can be met with punishment from the state. That's just sort of what's in the letter of the law. But what we're focused on now is new energy, new people, new direction, and a desire to help resolve this issue that we're all experiencing, affordable housing for the working class here in Broward County. St. Ruth has every intention to move forward with an approved project, and will do so in partnership with the City of Dania Beach, from inception to completion. And I believe that ends my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, that concludes public comment for this portion for item 12.1. Do I have any discussion from the commission at this time? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Romoli.
Thank you, Mayor. Corinne, at any point, at any time, that you can, if we didn't do anything with this vacation right now, would that access point ever be used, or can it ever be used as a throughway street for any reason?
That's very broad. The, I'm trying to recall the photo of the property location. I believe the, if you were to extend the pavement, it straddles two property lines to the north. So, you'd have to have a taking, or through redevelopment, have those properties dedicate that land in order to establish a road, but it's not on any traffic plan for that extension. So, I would, as the city staff, would be hard-pressed to make that request if there's no plan for that expansion, for that roadway expansion. So, even through redevelopment of those parcels, I don't see that roadway expanding.
Okay. And the two access points that they currently have are within the code to be able to be used as access points?
Yes, they are immediately adjacent to the east property line.
Okay, one is to the north and one is to the east, is that correct?
I believe one's to the south and one's to the east.
Or west, yeah, okay.
Yeah, both on the eastern end of the property, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all, Commissioner Romoli? Okay. Do I have any other comment for the, of the commission at this time? Commissioner Luellen?
Yes, to the mayor, to the city attorney. I just, I would like to ask a couple of questions about the Live Local, because that was brought up, and that's not something that's been brought up yet until tonight, and I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on that.
There are a lot of new changes that are just going into effect, I think, January as to the Live Local, and they have not yet been interpreted. So, I don't have an answer to some of the statements being made. There is a section of the new Live Local that does talk about allowing affordable housing on religious institutional property, but the language is "may," and I have to look at it further. I don't have any detailed analysis yet of it.
So, we don't know.
I don't have a straight answer for you. I mean, there is a possibility that affordable housing can be done on church property, but that could have been true beforehand. I mean, you know, they have the zoning for it. But I don't see how the access is a portion of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Luellen. I don't see, I have a question. We do, this is all based at the heart of public safety, and I have a couple of public safety questions. Can I ask the chief, would you be able to answer a couple of questions about the public safety issues? I have a couple of public safety questions that it seems like the whole application has come up because of the public safety issues, and so, I just have a couple of questions regarding the entire neighborhood, because there was different people who were able to bring up different aspects of community safety. So, has the applicant reached out to you for a safety plan regarding the neighborhood?
Yes, we spoke to her this week, a couple, last week, I believe.
Okay. And do we have, what steps can BSO take to increase and patrol the presence, or the lighting, or deterrence of the illegal activity in the neighborhood?
We can do road calls in the area, we can put our eye on the sky tower, we can maneuver it more, but it's already in that area. We can do our, we can do directed patrols in the area, we can do saturated patrols in the area with our crime suppression team, but unfortunately, no matter what area in the city, we cannot be there 24/7. That is just something that we can't do. So, no matter how much proactivity we do, we can't be there every second of every day.
Right, and I appreciate that. That's what I want, is you can't be there 24/7, but do you have a plan, have you started working with the plan for, with the family to have more patrol or increased patrol of that neighborhood?
Yes, we're gonna start, there's things that we implemented for the time being, and that's what we'll do, but that's all we can do in any neighborhood, is increase our directed patrols, increase our presence, get the crime suppression team in the area. That's what we can do in any area.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you so much, Chief. I do appreciate your expertise in this area, because it was based on public safety. That's all I have for the questions. Do I have any other comments from the commission on this? Okay. Well, I will give my final remarks, or do we have a motion or a second? Do you have come, I have, oh, hold on just a second, let me, this is 12.1, but hold on, I'm gonna give my, my final comments on this here. I want to thank all of you all for coming out. This has been a very long night so far for everyone. Thank you, Captain Tarana, thank you, all the residents, thank you, St. Ruth and the James family. We are here for this second reading, and the issue that touches on many important themes as far as safety and fairness and community planning. Ms. James expressed concerns about, at the previous meeting, you know, a lot of nefarious activity that made her feel in her home unsafe, and I do understand that, and everyone has the right to feel safe in their home and be protected. At the same time, St. Ruth Baptist Church, who has been here for 117 years and was not aware, well, they were not aware of the request as immediately as, as was stated at the beginning of, during the first reading. They have expressed different concerns, but for me, the foundation of this whole issue is the public safety issue, which the chief has said that they are now in talks and that they are now working towards doing some more safety measures within the neighborhood. The City of Dania Beach has invested over $20 million over the last five, over the next five years to increase the public safety in our neighborhoods. We do have the Sky Watch Towers, we do have, we just added another sergeant, I believe that is also on this agenda this evening. So, I just want to make sure, to me, vacating the right-of-way should be the last resort. If you tell me that the increased safety, the increased lighting, the increased police presence, none of that is working, then I would say absolutely, let's go ahead and move forward with that. But what we're looking at, to me, it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse, and before we even try to see if the safety plan is working, then we're just automatically, you know, saying that we should vacate the right-of-way. And so, it's not just one individual. I believe that we are here to ensure that the entire community is safe, the entire neighborhood is safe, and, you know, it just really, for me, we should be addressing the holistic issue of public safety, as opposed to looking at an individual issue, which to me kind of puts a Band-Aid on the issue, as opposed to looking at the entire neighborhood and how we can increase safety for the entire neighborhood. So, with that, I just look at the big picture with this, and while I respect the applicant's concerns, I also have a duty to safeguard the interests of every resident, every neighborhood, and the city as a whole. So, public safety is and will remain our top priority, but it must be achieved through partnership, provi- But it must be achieved through partnership, prevention, and planning, and not be, be giving away a public right of way that belongs to all the residents of Dania Beach unless it is a last resort after public safety measures have failed. So with that, I will call for a vote on motion ordinance twelve point one.
Was there a motion?
I'm asking for a motion. Commissioner Romoli?
Are we on twelve point one now?
Yes.
Okay. First, before I make a motion, I would like to encourage our CRA and our city to work with Saint Ruth on trying to come to a resolution to develop that property for affordable housing. I think it would be great to have some kind of synergy with our CRA and Saint Ruth. And, and that, because we do want more affordable housing. I, however, after hearing everything, I don't see any reason or the benefit of having not approved this item to move forward because it doesn't make any difference as to whether we move forward with affordable housing or not there. So I'm going to make a motion to approve this twelve point one.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Romoli. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ryan Elora. Let's go ahead and call this to a vote.
Commissioner Lawland?
Oh, hold on.
I'm just going to make one comment real quick before I vote. I just really wish this could have been resolved. And I have a completely between the two parties. I really do. The division is not good. I agree, Shaniqua, I completely agree with you. I wish this was not divisive and I wish this had not gotten to this point. But I wish we could have had a resolution without having to come to this. With that, I will vote yes.
Commissioner Romoli?
Yes.
Oh, hold on. Did you hear?
I did.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
No.
Mayor, the motion carries four to one.
All right, twelve point one passes, is approved four to one. At this time, we're going to take a five minute, seven minute.
We just finished the ten point one?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yes, ten point one since they are together. Yes, yes, go ahead. Can we just have a motion to approve ten point one, please?
Make a motion to approve ten point one.
All right, do I have a second from Vice Mayor?
Second.
All right. Elora will call it to a vote.
Commissioner Lawland?
Yes.
Commissioner Romoli?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
No.
Mayor, the motion carries four to one.
Thank you so much. Now, at this time, we will take a break. I'm going to say, let's come back at nine fifty-five. Can I stop leaving? Or will it stop everything? I don't know.
Okay, we're gonna begin in one minute if everyone can make their way back to the Commission, dais and chambers, we will begin with in a minute, thank you. We will begin, resume the meeting at nine fifty-five P M and up next we have public safety reports, Captain Jason Torrell, if you would please come up and give your report, thank you.
I'm still here, good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, so for the record, this is the latest I've ever given my report.
The record.
So I'll start out, as you know, we've been, my deputies have been very proactive up and down the federal highway corridor, the South Federal Highway Corridor, so we're continuing our proactivity, reference multiple complaints that we've received over the last year, again, our deputies stopped a female that they saw loitering around one of the hotels, upon stopping her, she had two active warrants after her arrest, in a search incident to arrest, we found a thrown narcotics on her person, crack cocaine, she was arrested and taken to the jail, also during that same day, we were continuing our proactivity over at the Deluxe Inn, and we observed a female that we knew was involved in prostitution from previous encounters, we went out with a lady, we stopped her, we ended up having a consensual contact with her, in a search of her, we found on her again, crack cocaine, we found dominations of money in Chinatown, many dogs that she was there doing prostitution, so we get that information to our crime suppression team and we're continuing to work that hotel and that area that we've been working, we've made numerous arrests already this year at that hotel in that area for prostitution and drug activity, and we're continuing our proactivity in that area. I also wanted to talk about over at Happy Family, our C S T team what observed a vehicle over at the Happy Family earlier this week, and they observed a drug transaction, they waited for the vehicle to leave Happy Family, and upon making the traffic stop of the vehicle, they got that driver out of the car, they got the driver into custody because he had a suspended license, and then a search incident to arrest, they found a hundred and forty-five grams of cannabis inside the vehicle as well as MDMA, so he was charged with possession of MDMA, attempted distribute, as well as possession of the cannabis with attempted distribute, in addition to that, our crime suppression team made four arrests over at twenty-five Southwest Eighth Avenue, which was a reference to complaints that we received at our core meeting last, last month, where they complained about that neighborhood, for, excuse me, sorry, out of those four arrests, one of those arrests was possession of a firearm by the convicted felon, two of them were felony drug possessions, and one of them was warrants, so we are gonna make contact with the lady who was at the core meeting and let her know the proactivity that we've conducted in her neighborhood, and I also want to just highlight some of our successes that we've done, we had our night out with law enforcement that we partnered with the city for their event on Friday night, and it was a fantastic night, I saw the Mayor, Commissioner Llewellyn, it was a really nice night, the kids were really happy, they looked amazing dressed up, and we had all the B S O resources out there, it was a beautiful night, and also I didn't get to talk about it last time, but our coffee with the cop event was fantastic too, we had a really, really, really nice turnout, I saw mostly everybody there, the community came out, we had great pictures, great time, everyone asked a lot of questions, and besides that, everything else is good, in the last, I couldn't talk about the last, the last meeting, but we did have Argentina National Soccer Team and the Puerto Rico National Soccer Team, we're staying in our hotel, staying in our city at two of our hotels, so we worked with their private security, as well as the hotels, to make sure that those teams were here without any issues, without any security related issues, and both of those teams were here without any, any events, so that conducts my meeting, so we had a lot going on, as you can tell, dealing with the national teams coming in, there's a lot that goes into that, I talked to the City Manager all the time, so she knows our security plans, and I try to keep that quiet, because I don't want everyone to know where the teams are staying, so a lot goes into that, keeping, keeping that safe for everybody, including our residents.
Thank you Captain, thank you for that coordination, because it's no small feat, so we greatly appreciate everything you do to keep it on the level and keep us safe, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hold on just a second, I believe Commissioner Romoli.
Thank you Mayor, I just wanted to echo that, I was actually at La Merdean when speaking to the General Manager and the sales team there, and they had nothing but praise for you guys, so thanks again for all you do there.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you Captain, appreciate you, let's bring up our Chief Sergio Palasone for the B S O fire report.
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, our great city staff and the great citizens of Danny Beach, so during the month of September, our units responded to a total of six hundred and eighty-three calls for service, a hundred and two of them were fire-related calls, and five hundred and eighty-one were medical-related calls. Over the past two weeks, our units have participated in live burns, so they're actually going into a camp with live fire, as well as training in a vacant building that we were able to acquire down in Howlandale, our units go in there and simulate different scenarios, and they do large-scale searches, and this is just training, one of the things that we did is called rapid intervention training, which is basically, we train our firefighters to save one of our own in case they went down, what you actually simulate somebody lost in the fire, and they go in there and they have to find them, and it's very labor intensive, and it's very hard for our, because they're on air, they're wearing their gear, and it's in the hot building, so they get to see what it's like, it's great for our rookies, it's a great team building for our crews, and it puts them to the test. Our engine crew and life safety educator were at the Fall Festival this past Friday, and they had a great time also, and it was nice to see all the young kids, as Cam Torrell mentioned, and continuing with our community partnerships, tomorrow, our engine crew and life safety educator will be going to participate at Collins Elementary for their trunk or treat, so that, I'm sure those kids will have a great time tomorrow, and we did some A E D training over at the Danny Casino, and later this week, we're gonna go down there and do a tabletop exercise and conduct some safety in crisis situations where, you know, they get to evaluate how they do during these exercises, and we'll sit down as a team and work with them, and that's all I have.
Thank you Chief, appreciate that report, and thank you all for B S O, for what you do for the kids, I had an absolute blast at that Fall Fest, and so I appreciate the safety aspect, but thank you for engaging with our community, especially with our children, greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we have done citizens' comments, so we will move on to the consent agenda, are there any items that the Commission wishes to pull from the consent agenda, Vice Mayor?
No, just gonna make a motion pass consent agenda Mayor.
Motion from Vice Mayor, do I have a second?
Second.
For a second from Commissioner Llewellyn, all in favor say aye, any opposed, all right, the consent agenda passes unanimously, and we will move on to item nine point one, bids and requests for proposals, Eve, if you would please read item nine point one.
Yes Mayor, a resolution of the City Commission authorizing to award and enter into an agreement for the I T B twenty-five dash twenty-one to Hawkins Inc. for bulk chemical purchases for the water treatment plant, authorizing from the date of the agreement is executed, and to exceed the annual vendor total threshold of fifty thousand, to be valid each year the contract is in place, and further providing that such purchases are to be made in the Water Division's approved budget appropriations account, provided for conflicts and effective date, public services.
Sean Shutton.
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager and City Attorney, thank you very much City Attorney for the very thorough explanation of this item, very, very succinct, we are looking for authorization to enter into an agreement with Hawkins, Hawkins Inc.'s as the only bidder for this item.
All right, thank you Mr. Shutton, Vice Mayor.
Make a motion pass nine point one Mayor, do we need a public, pass nine point one.
Have a motion to pass nine point one from Vice Mayor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Llewellyn, all in favor say aye, any opposed say nay, item nine point one passes unanimously, thank you Commission, all right, then we have item, next we have item nine point two, Eve, if you could please read item nine point two.
A resolution of the City Commission authorizing the proper city officials to execute an agreement with Merrick Industrial Management Corporation for R F P twenty-five dash twenty-three entitled Frost Park, sports court conversion project conflicts, and an effective date parks and recreation.
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, staff, residents that are still here, we made it to the end, so this is to award to Merrick Industrial for the conversion project at Frost Park, they were the highest ranked firm, we entered negotiations with them, we had legal's assistance and procurement's assistance, and we fit that they were the best, and they met what we needed, so let's just to award them.
Thank you Frankie, and do I have a motion, I see Commissioner Ryan.
Motion to approve, item.
Nine point two.
It's nine point two, yeah, motion to approve, I'm nine point two.
I have a commi, a motion from Commissioner Ryan, do I have a second, Vice Mayor, hold on, Vice Mayor.
Second Mayor.
All in favor say aye, all right, item nine point two passes unanimously, we will move on to item ten, quasi judicial and public hearing items, Eve, if you could please.
We've done that already.
Oh, we did, oh yes, we did, yes.
We're up to.
Yes, we, we, yes, 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 we have moved on, this is fantastic a little bit, yes, we are now on to discussion and possible action, item thirteen point one, Eve, if you could please read item thirteen point one.
I will, and this is a public hearing item which was advertised, it is a resolution of the City Commission authorizing the City Commission to enter into an extension of the employment agreement with the City Manager Anna M. Garcia through May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-six, providing for public hearing, conflicts, and an effective date.
Thank you, this is a public hearing, does anyone wish to speak for against this item, seeing none, do I have a motion, or Commissioner, this is sponsored by Commissioner Llewellyn.
Yeah, can I just say something for?
Absolutely.
I have a nice little memo there to explain the reasoning for this, and I know, I think, yeah, I was the only one that was on the dais when we hired you, out of the five of us, so I am happy to extend the contract, I am sad to see you go, when you do go, but you know that we wish you well, and we're glad that we get to hang on to you for an extra five months, to make sure that, you know, we can transition things well into the future, and I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for the city and for this Commission, and for the staff and everybody here, so, I don't know if you want to say anything, but then I'm gonna move to approve item number thirteen point one.
Thank you Commissioner Llewellyn for those comments, we have Vice Mayor and a motion.
Anna wants to speak.
So, oh yes, yeah, she usually chimes in.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn, and I want to thank my team, they don't usually sit here, but their support means everything to me, every day we have a goal, and that's to be better than we were yesterday, we have built a culture here, and that culture is about vision, and bringing that vision to reality, aligning our words with, with, with action, having a deep bench, developing talent, and being extremely responsive to our residents and all of you, I'm proud to be the head coach of these two hundred and fifty men and women that are in the arena, when you do nothing, you make no mistakes, but we're doing so many things, and you could see it tangibly, you could see it every single day here, I thank God for, for more than anything, the discernment that he has given me, to be able to pick, every single one of these individuals were hired and or promoted in this administration, and these are the people that make me look good, so I can make you look good, so we can take care of our residents each and every day, so I'm grateful for the opportunity, I started my career in public service thirty-five years ago, as a rec. leader one, making four bucks, so my dad, may he rest in peace, always told me, Anna, never forget where you came from, I think because I never forget where I came from, because I've lined those ballfields, and I've cleaned those bathrooms, and I've taken care of those locker rooms, I know what it is to have that blood and sweat and sacrifice, and they know it, I have a very high bar for this team, but I love them deeply, and my goal has always been to bring out the best in them, and we have done that, and what can I say, we couldn't have a better person waiting in the wings, and Candio Sosa Cruz, who has been together with me for fourteen years, so my job will be done, and when I walk away here after fifty years in labor force, fifty years I started at Jimmy's Cleaners, and then Burger King, you know, but at the end of the day, to you and to all that are up and coming here, it's not where you start is where you finish, so you are here in the United States of America, you work hard, and you know what, the sky's the limit for you, and for all the residents that get to have you here, the men and women in the arena, and thank you so much, I appreciate your sponsorship, I appreciate your support, I appreciate the people next to me as well, but we are not the same city, we are a better city, and every day, I promise you, until my last day here, that we will give you a hundred and fifty percent, thank you for your time.
Thank you City Manager, Vice Mayor.
Well, all that stuff you said Anna was what I had written down, I was gonna say about you, but, but no, I just, I won't go into it, I mean, you know how I feel, and I'm sure you know the rest of the, your staff and your commission field, but I second the motion, so.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and I will just say that this city would not be what it is without your leadership from the very beginning, it is night and day, and I really just want to reiterate the strategic plan that we all, you know, created together, which set the course for the progress and the transformation, so I do appreciate everything that you have done for this city, and there is no second City Manager that comes close, so thank you for all that you have done and continue to do for this city. All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye, any opposed say nay, all right, item thirteen point one passes unanimously, and then, next we have.
Thirteen three.
Thank you Vice Mayor.
That's because I'm, I'm just excited.
Thirteen point three, amending the rules of procedure, City Commission meeting start time sponsored by Vice Mayor Salvino.
Thank you, thank you very much, okay, I'm gonna just lay this out, and I don't want to create any issue with anybody up here, I'll explain what my point is, and then, and if you don't want to comment, that's fine, we just say yes or no, and move on, because we've been here a long time tonight, you know, I, we've been, I look outside when we get ready to start our meeting at seven o'clock, and like tonight, the staff that's here sits there from five to seven waiting for the meeting to start, it just seems like a waste of our taxpayers' dollars while they're sitting there, plus it keeps them from going home to their families a little bit earlier, an hour earlier, I'm looking, you know, to move it from seven to six, and then on the nights we have C R A meeting, we start at six, and we, as we already do, and we go to, we start a meeting at six thirty, because I think with our C R A being run by our Deputy Director, or Deputy City Manager, it just gets done in fifteen minutes, because it kind of coordinates with our city, because the city's taking over so much of the C R A responsibilities, I mean, it's, it's no different, all we're doing is adding one night of the Commission meeting to go from basically seven to six, because the C R A is still gonna start at six o'clock, and then just move the meeting to six thirty, so I'm asking the Commission to move it up to six o'clock, you know, gets everybody home early, there's, I just think it's, it's good for everybody to get home to their families, and, you know, it's not anything to do with me, because I don't care if we're here till ten or eleven o'clock, I don't get tired, I know some people up here are slurring their words because they're tired, but that wasn't meant to anybody, Mayor, so I just, it's simple, if you have anything to say about it, you can, and if not, you know, we can vote on it and just say yes or no, and we'll move forward.
I will let Commissioner Llewellyn weigh in on that.
Thank you Mayor, so I have never had a complaint from any resident about our meetings starting too late, the complaints that I have received however, are when we start meetings too early, for example, the core meetings, we actually had some comments on social media, I had people say things to me personally about starting those at five thirty, but understanding that those are not typical meetings where we're having public hearings, you have people coming to speak, but it's a different sort of situation, but in the, in that case, I heard from a number of residents who were upset that, that they couldn't get to the meetings on time, be, those, the core meetings, because they started at five thirty, a lot of people do work in the city, people that come out to these meetings often are getting done with work, go home, grab a quick bite to eat, and then come to the meetings, and that's one of the reasons why they were started at seven o'clock, I also haven't heard anything really from staff complaining about it either, maybe they are, maybe they're not, but a night like tonight had nothing to do with our start time, it had everything to do with the items that were on the agenda, and the fact that we had two, two items in particular that generated a lot of interest and had a lot of people coming in to speak, that could happen at six o'clock, that could happen at seven o'clock, and you would still potentially be here even longer, so I don't think changing a policy and changing the time of a meeting to an hour earlier is necessarily going to do anything, I understand your concern about seeing people sitting around and doing whatever, but I know a lot of people actually do go and get something to eat in between, they do take a little break, people do tend to come in later on Commission nights, and I, if I'm not mistaken, they also come in a little later the day after, some do, I don't know about all, I just, this has been a policy the way that it's been forever, it was set up this way for a reason, and I think it will end up causing confusion, and it will potentially not allow certain people, a number of people, to be able to come and voice their opinions on things, because they won't be able to get here timely for the things that they want to speak on, there are many nights lately, we've been managing the meetings fairly well, there have been many nights lately where we're out of here in an hour, hour and a half, less than two hours, and I can remember historically coming to meetings years ago, when I wasn't even on the dais, and we would be here sometimes until midnight, so we're doing a much better job of managing the meetings and getting through them, managing the agenda, and making sure that things get done quicker, and I think if we keep working on that, and trying not to put too many things on the same agenda that are controversial, or going to generate a lot of speakers, and maybe do one, maximum two, but maybe just one per meeting, that would help with the, with the whole situation, so that's all I have to say about that, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Llewellyn, you wanna? Okay, hold on just a second, Vice Mayor is feeling chatty.
Okay, just real quick, and then we can vote, City of Hollywood starts at like one o'clock in the afternoon, I think Broward County starts somewhere around the same time, just saying, and, and the other thing about the complaints that I hear is that, you know, a lot of times people sit here and listen to the meetings on the, on the TV, and by this time they're already asleep, and they just would like it to be done by eight or eight thirty, so they can get to bed by nine or nine thirty, but that's all, I'm just making my points, and we can move on, it's, it's whatever you guys want, thank you.
Thank you Vice Mayor, Commissioner Ryan has comments?
Yeah, thanks for bringing this up, Commissioner Salvino might as well discuss it, and I'll give my opinion on it, you know, as the past Chair, I felt that seven o'clock was a decent time to start, you know, especially for those that have, you know, jobs as well, before, before the Commission meeting, it kind of gives you time to take a breather, right, you know, say if you get off work at five, you could actually come to the city, and, and that's why the staff is here, and the management is here, because we could ask them questions before the meeting, I feel like if we moved the meeting up to five or six, it kind of takes away the Commissioner's time to, you know, iron out whatever questions they have leading up before the meeting, because I know sometimes, all of us, right, we have some critical questions that we have to ask, some that comes up last minute, and it, it gives us a little bit of time just to kind of digest everything, right, and help us prepare for the meetings a little better, with our agenda load that we have as a city, I think that seven o'clock doesn't go too late usually, you know, sometimes our agendas do get a little packed, like tonight, and I get what you're saying about the county and City of Hollywood, but their agendas tend to be a little heavier than ours, so I, we did change the C R A time, I know C R A used to start at five thirty, and sometimes we'll adjust it based off of the load on the C R A, but yeah, I'm okay with how everything is right now, but I definitely see where you're coming from Commissioner Salvino.
Vice Mayor sir.
All right, Commissioner Romoli, no comments from you, I'll just, and quickly, because, and not repeat everything that's been said, and I do want to thank Vice Mayor for bringing that up. do want to thank Vice Mayor for bringing that up, but, you know, my initial concern was the consistency of the time, that people are used to coming at 7 o'clock for many years now, and then if you start 6:30 here, 7 o'clock there, you know, people need to have that consistency of knowing that commission meeting Tuesday, second, second Tuesday of the month is at 7 o'clock. I am one who gets tired, so, you know, for me, I, I, I'm better, you know, by 9 o'clock, so, but I do, I do want to point out that tonight's meeting was extraordinary. We're not gonna have these packed meetings where this is the normal time that we get out. Most of the time, we can look at the agenda, we can look and see, and if we need to move things around on the agenda and let the people speak first, or let the public comments speak first, then we can make sure that people have their voices heard in a decent amount of time. So I'm good with keeping the consistency of it for right now, and, but thank you for bringing that up. So, do I have a motion? Or, hold on, Vice Mayor, did you want to say something? Okay. All right, do I have a motion? Are we just gonna let it die? Or, no, no. Everybody's, okay, Vice Mayor's letting it die. Okay, so we will move on. It does not pass, item 13.2. What was that? No. 13, 13.3. Item 14, we have advisory board appointments from the city clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, the education and marine advisory board, those are vacancies for, and they have appointments by Commissioner Ryan, he did get confirmation from those two board members. One, for the marine advisory board, it's Chris Rabel?
Rabel.
Rabel. And for the education advisory board, it was Abby Martinez. So I would just need consensus from the commission to have those two appointed. Do I have consensus? Awesome, thank you.
Do you have consensus? Do I have consensus for the board members? Yes, consensus, all right, thank you so much. We have Commissioner Ryan's. I'm working on mine, getting my information for the Danian Beach Housing Authority Board. I have the person, but I just, I'm gonna bring it up at the next meeting.
Yes.
Louis, I mean, sorry, Commissioner Ramoni.
Louis is good, too. Mayor, if you don't have someone for the housing authority, I do have really someone very, very good. So just in case, I'd love for you to meet her if you don't have someone.
I, I have someone, but I will confirm if they don't want, they had some, you know, well, if it doesn't work out, then I...
Being on that board for as many years as I was, I think it really needs someone very active and hungry to do something there.
Yeah.
I think so many times, people just show up there and do nothing, and, and we need a little bit of leadership on the board itself.
Okay, well, this person is a leader, so if it doesn't work out, I will, I will look at your person, and I can let Elora know this weekend, if that doesn't work out, then she can contact you regarding that. All right, Public Guard Advisory Board?
Yes.
We do have an application, so I do know there were, there were more people that were interested in that board, but if you guys want to make a decision tonight, that's up to you, but I just, I believe that that position just became notified, that we just learned that there was an opening and there was already a commission, so I would personally like to give it like another meeting, because I know the other people were interested in the position, so we don't just have one person. That is a very important board, and we need dedicated members for that. So if we could just defer that to the next meeting as well, and see if we get some applications. All right, commission comments, item 15, Commissioner Llewellyn, you are up.
Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm gonna be very, very brief tonight and say, first of all, thank you to everyone who reached out to express condolences for my husband's uncle who just passed. We're have, we're in the midst of dealing with all of that this week, so I'm gonna be a little bit out of pocket, but I do want to say thank you to everybody who did reach out. And on a happier note, I would like to say congratulations to Commissioner Ryan. Bouncing baby boy. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Commissioner Ramoni?
Thank you. Yeah, again, congratulations, Commissioner. We're not stopping at three, right? Okay, we'll see. Everybody, I believe, here knows Derek Hankerson, and he's been dealing with chemo, radiation, going through a really bad time, but I'm happy to say, at least from last week, when I spoke to him, it was his last treatment, and he's doing well, so let's keep our fingers crossed that it's, it's good for Derek. And if you can, reach out to him, if you have his number, give him a call and wish him well. Anna, I'm gonna try not to get emotional. I know it's too late, isn't it? You're hearing my voice. I met you with Bill. I just tagged along with him and met you at Starbucks, and as soon as I met you, I loved you. I knew you were the right person for this job. Of course, I had nothing to do with it, but Lori, and everybody who was responsible for bringing you to the city, thank you. And I have learned so much from you in the short period of time that I've been a commissioner, and your staff has been amazing, and I've learned so much from them. They've made me a better commissioner, but most importantly, made me a better person. So thank you very, very much, and we're gonna miss you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramoni. Commissioner Ryan?
All right, I'll save my Anna comments for some time later. We still got, we still got plenty of time with her. Yeah, thanks, thanks for the well wishes, I try to keep, you know, personal life and government life separate, but, yeah, we want another baby boy in the family, there's another Ryan, we just keep growing, so. Yeah, so we got a new Danian, so that's one more to the census, right? 32,001. With that, Happy Halloween, everybody, have a safe and happy Halloween, All Saints Day is the following day, and be sure on November 2nd at 2:00 a.m. to roll your clocks backwards, right? Yeah, so everybody gets an extra hour of sleep, congratulations to you all on that one, and look forward to an honorable Veterans Day as well, coming up on November 11th. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Vice Mayor?
Way you said that, you don't want me to talk. I have nothing to say, I just, congratulations, Commissioner Ryan, on you, and, and to reiterate, to reiterate, on Halloween night, please be careful, watch where you're out, outside, watch for cars, because there may be people out there that are not watching for you, and make sure that your family goes through the candy, and do not eat what you don't like, just, chief, right? And, and the deputies will be out patrolling the area, so please be careful. Thank you very much, Mayor. It's your turn.
And I will be brief. I just want to reiterate how fun the Fall Festival was, and what a great job Parks did on that. We were out there with the BSO, the kids, everybody dressed up, but you guys do such a, it was just a feel-good, it was so, it was different energy from Oktoberfest, but it was just so wonderful. We were dunking Detective Hoff, it was his last dunk, you know? It, it just was such a great feel-good community vibe. We had the Historical Society out there, we had our Groovy Days bus, and we just had a really good time out there, and so I just want to thank you all for doing that, but nobody ever says that, you guys were really, it was two events in one night. You also had the boots on the ground with the gracefully aging, and you, if you haven't seen Pastor Ricky Young dressed up with his cowboy gear, or you have not seen anything yet, I mean, it, I really still, every time I say it, I really want to be like them when I grow up. They did, the decorations, the music, everybody, it was, it was two events going on simultaneously, all stellar at the same time, so thank you all for doing what you do and doing it at such a high level, because it really makes a difference. This is why I do what I do, because I love this community, and this community is unlike any other, so I thank you all for pouring your heart and soul into making sure that our community stays bonded by the way that you helped to execute these events. And with that, again, I love the name of your son, Commissioner Ryan, I think it's the cutest name ever, and I also want to just, just say, happy veterans, thank you again, City Manager, thank you all for all you do, and have a wonderful and safe, happy Halloween. Good night.